We call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Cordero Madera Town Council and Sanitary District Number Two meeting on Tuesday, June 6th. May we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Andrews.
President.
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazia.
President.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Here.
Mayor first.
Here. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. There we go. All right. First up on tonight's agenda is open time for public comment. This is the time on the agenda that we reserve for members of the public to speak on something not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment? Would you mind approaching the podium and state your name and where you live? And you've got three minutes. By the way, we do keep a timer going on the screen so you can track your time.
I'm Ted McKay. I'm a happy resident of this town. I'm here at O'Leary. And I'm also--
I'm sorry. Is the microphone on?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm a native of Marin. I started out my earliest years in Sausalito, and then I grew up in Kentfield. My wife and I lived in San Francisco for many years. But thanks to her diligence and generosity, she helped find us a really nice house here in Cordero Madera, which I think is the best town in Marin, maybe the best town in the world. While growing up in the '50s, one of my most vivid memories was of a group here in Marin, maybe a family, maybe not, I won't give details, which was fabulously rich. It was widely believed that they had very close ties with Joseph Stalin. Joseph Stalin was a bully who sought complete world domination, but this was during the Cold War. And the people of America, not including this group, were steadfast. They fought against their government taken over by Soviet communism, as what was happening elsewhere, such as in Eastern Europe. Fast forward. The leader of Russia now is Vladimir Putin. He is not a communist, not anymore. On the contrary, he is a sponsor of fascist, also known as white nationalist movements all around the world. He's had only limited success in Europe, but in the United States, I think he won the jackpot. Left wing and right wing, they sound like opposites, but in truth, they are very much alike. They share a contempt for religion and a wish for banks and corporations to be owned by the state, or rather, for them to be the state. But most importantly, the leader is typically a demagogue, maybe sometimes a casino owner who makes fake promises and uses his wealth to gain power, or his wealth or power to gain wealth, or a combination of the two. Who knows what the billionaire bully back east will think up next to further his power and wealth? Maybe he'll call up the troops. But California is far away, and the people of this state will remain steadfast against this continuing scourge of fascism, as will democratic-minded people all over the world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak? Yes.
Yeah, I'm David Hyams, and I live on Enterprise Drive in Cordero Madera. I'm a lucky guy. I'm healthy and have had a long and am enjoying a long life. But what I observed--
I'm sorry. We do need--
What I observed last Thursday in Washington, when our president withdrew us from the climate accord, Paris, of Paris, for me, really took the cake. It's unlike anything I've ever experienced before. And so my purpose here this evening is to ask you to consider an agenda item in which you would reaffirm Cordero Madera's interest in CO2 reduction and continuing the efforts of the town along these lines. As far as I know, you would be the first in Marin County to do it, although mayors across the United States have done it, including in Sonoma County, in San Mateo County, San Francisco, Los Angeles, et cetera, et cetera. I believe that covers it for me. I hope you'll take this action. Thank you.
Well, you got ahead of me, Mr. Hyams, because I was going to announce during my report that I have asked to agendize in an upcoming meeting, joining the--and I'm looking up the exact name of it, but it's Climate Mayors.
That's them, yeah.
So--
I'm permitting with them. Thank you.
I have already asked for that to be agendized.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak? No? All right. I will close public open time. Thank you both for getting up and being willing to say what you wanted to say. Next, we have a presentation. Eric? Hi. You want to come on up? Why don't you go to the podium? And I would like to introduce this item. It's Item 3.1, A Certificate of Appreciation, to Eric Ahern. In recognition of your contributions to the town of Cordero Madera during your term as youth commissioner to the Parks and Rec Commission, you served from July 1, 2015 through June 30 of 2017.
Nice.
The Cordero Madera Town Council extends its sincere appreciation for your service to our community and wishes you the very best in your future university and career endeavors. So I wanted to say congratulations. Thank you so much. [applause] Say a few words and tell us what you're going to be doing. We'd love to hear.
Yeah, so I want to say thank you to the council for this recognition. I don't really--I don't need this, but like, thank you. It's very--I appreciate it. But I've had a pleasure serving with Mario and the rest of the Parks and Rec Commission. It's been a wonderful experience for me as someone who's interested in a career in some kind of government. And it's been a pleasure to come to these town council meetings throughout the years to kind of watch you guys operate. I think you guys do a tremendous job representing our community and speaking on behalf of the community members. So thank you for that. And next year, I'm going on to UC Berkeley to study political science.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Best of luck. All right. Very impressive. All right. Next up on the agenda-- oh, thank you. Presentation of Public Service Recognition Week proclamation. By the way, did you want us to vote on Eric's commendation?
No.
What about this proclamation? No vote? All right. This is a presentation of Public Service Recognition Week proclamation. In lieu of passing this around, if you don't mind, I'll just read the highlights. Town of Cordero Madera proclamation, "Whereas the people of the town of Cordero Madera are served every single day by town employees who provide the diverse services demanded of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas the town council and town citizens recognize that the town's employees are the organization's most important asset and resource for providing quality public services. And whereas the town also recognizes that there is a tradition of hard and often exemplary work and dedication to public service among its employees. And whereas the town wishes to support and encourage the continuation and growth of this tradition and to properly recognize and express its appreciation to its employees individually, as a group, townwide, and in all departments. Now therefore, the town council of the town of Cordero Madera does hereby resolve that we proclaim to all citizens that June 5 through 9 shall be Cordero Madera Public Service Recognition Week." So let's all join together in celebration and acknowledgement of public service employees. [applause] And we just so happen to have all of our department managers. So thank you all. But you got to pass it on to the staff, so, okay?
I don't think so.
All right.
All right.
Next up, Department Head Budget Presentations. The council is to receive reports from said department heads regarding department budgets, goals, and objectives for the current fiscal year and the coming fiscal year. Todd, would you like to take it away?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In preparation for fiscal year 1718 budget, in our town council budget hearing on June 20th, the town department heads are here to report to council on their performance in meeting fiscal year 1617 goals and objectives. They'll also outline a working plan for next fiscal year and provide pertinent metrics defining service delivery and output. To assist with the discussion attached is the town's proposed 1718 organizational chart and a narrative overview and work plan for each department. And also, I've added our historical staffing chart. And so this is a working document. It's something we've started this fiscal year and will continue to build upon it moving forward. It'll be part of the budget. So moving forward, if you're a community member, council member, or anyone else, and you want to see what public works engineering is all about, you'll see, again, this overview. It'll be a summary overview of the department. You'll see the staffing. You will see our goals and objectives for this year and what we're trying to accomplish the next year. And so it's--again, it's the starting point of everything that we do. This will be the last year that we show the historical staffing chart. I think it's one that we should talk about. Again, back in 2002, we had approximately 63 employees. Due to a lot of the budget fiscal issues that we've had over the decade, we dropped down below 44 at one point. Right now, we are in the 45 to 47 range, give or take. I'll just tell you, moving forward and really spending time with our department heads, that is probably our area where we'll continue to be at, and we can continue to provide strong, strong services. I think we have to be careful in comparing what we did a decade ago. This is just a different time, and there's a lot that we expect of our staff. And so I'm excited for you to hear from each of them in a little summary of what they do and what they go through. It's pretty remarkable of the work, the great work that they're doing. And they each have a unique challenge, you know, compared to the Central Marin Police Chief that provides police services for three communities, our fire chief that is going through potential consolidation between Cordero Madera and Larkspur. If you're the superintendent of public works and you're overseeing sewer and flood control, our streets, our roads, our infrastructure, our parks, I mean, it's remarkable what we ask each of them. When you look at what our engineering staff of three, what they're accomplishing when we have over $10 million in capital improvements projects before us. It's really an unmarkable task across the board. And so I'm excited for you to hear from them directly, and we'll start. And I just find it really interesting of where they're all seated. You know, first of all, Mike, these two are bad influence, so you don't want to sit next to them. And I don't know if I want a police or fire to go first, because, you know, it's funny. We're like--it's the civilian rivalry that takes place amongst us. So I hope that plays out tonight, and you can get a taste of what staff meetings sometimes are like. And I notice our teachers' pets in the back are hiding in both our public works maintenance team and our park and rec and leisurely services. So I'm going to start off, since it's home field advantage, I'm going to start off with admin and finance, and I'm bringing out the torch. This is our George Warman good luck charm.
You got it on my desk.
So I'm not going to tap the screen today, but I'm going to do my best. And so what I did is I combined administration and finance, because really, everything we do really, it crosses over. And so the finance director and town treasurer, myself, and Rebecca Vaughn, our town clerk and my assistant, we really problem solve together a lot of issues that the town faces. And so, again, you'll see at the start, administrative and finance implements the legislative actions of the town council and provides the town administrative, the town's administrative, fiscal, personnel, property management, public information, and public record-keeping functions. In addition, our staff manages labor relations and staff support, intergovernmental relations, business license administration, risk management and insurance administration, the town's franchise agreements for cable television, solid waste collection, and state and federal mandates, such as the Americans with Disabilities Act. The department provides administrative and coordination for various town policies, programs, and procedures. It's a mouthful, but my point is, there's a lot going on on day-to-day within the office, and we have many challenges this last fiscal year and moving forward. And so with that, I wanted just to touch on a couple accomplishments, and then I'm going to ask our town treasurer, George Warman, to come up and also speak to some of the accomplishments within the 1617 fiscal year. But I want to start off on the first bullet point, because I think it's important, and it's with our town clerk, the work that she does. And one of our continued accomplishments, as we see it, is it's our continued, you know, strong community engagement, outreach, and transparency. You know, I think, and the grand jury did a report on transparency and our website back a year ago, and we received an A. And it was all of the work of our town clerk. She built that website. She spends every day, her weekends, constantly game planning of, hey, we have an issue here, no matter how small it is, we need to handle it on Monday morning. And she does that. We can always do better. And what you'll hear when we get to the end of this, of the work plan and the goals, I have a plan, because I really want to utilize, moving forward, her skill set. She has an amazing skill set. She's a gift for the town of Cordero Madera. And so I want to position her to do the job that I think we want her to do. And a lot of that has to do with in that paragraph I just read. And so I'm going to come back to that. But there's two important things that when we talk about the word transparency, and it's not my favorite word, but I think it's communication with our community. And two things that our community really asks of us is, first, it's tied to Granicus. And it's really the things we built on our website of, what is the town doing? What is going on in the town? And Granicus will allow us that portal, that information flow between the town and our community through our website and through our social media outlets to really share everything that we do. And it's there. It's one-stop shopping. It's easy to understand and follow. It's something that we will be streamlined moving forward as department heads, moving forward in our staff reports, how we write, how we analyze, how we do things. It'll help us all through our process to stay on point and task, to have good analysis and have our reports available on time for council meetings. The second one is Open Gov, and we've talked about this over the last year. And that's our financial transparency platform. So we entered an agreement early this year, and we're continuing to build that model so we can release it to the community and use it as a financing opportunity, a financial tool for people to evaluate. If we're talking about unfunded liabilities, capital improvements projects, long-term financial planning, you'll be able to access this portal, and it'll be helpful not only for us as staff, the council, and problem solving and working towards solutions, but also for our community to understand and then enter the conversation with the information that they need. And so that is a work in progress, but it will be up and running in fiscal year 1718. Next is the Bay Cities Risk Pool. We have been approved unanimously last week by the Bay Cities Risk Pool. So we are now, effective July 1st, will be part of that. And again, that will improve our insurance coverage as a town across all levels at an affordable and lower cost than we've had in recent years. And it'll also allow staff professional support in risk management and areas of human resources and so on. And so that'll be very helpful to staff. We hired a new finance director. She's here today, Daria Carrillo, and she'll be talking about our 1718 goals. We've also overhauled the town budget and format that you'll start to hear about tonight and review on June 20th. The Larkspur-Cordero Madera Fire Departments are now 100% merged operationally, and we're working towards a potential consolidation. And really, that is the success of our fire chief, and so I'm going to let him speak to it. But it has taken up a little bit of my time, and so I thought I would mention it also in my accomplishment, if that's okay. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. We've also focused on a number of training opportunities for employees, including disaster preparedness, harassment, defensive driving, emergency preparedness, and ethics. And we've also are in the process of improving the technology to enhance presentations within our council chambers, and you'll have a surprise at the next meeting. I was hoping it would be ready today, but I'm going to save it for the 20th. And with that, I would ask George Warman to come up and add any additional accomplishments in finance, please.
I've got to check my desk more frequently and see if everything's there. I'll be very brief. There's three or four items I'll mention. The first one actually was done in both 1516 and 1617, and that was the refinance of the Park Madera Center bonds. That's going to save us somewhere between $100,000 to $150,000 a year. And that was a lot of work, not only for myself, but also for our financial consultant and the town council as well. So that's the first item. The second item is that to facilitate making our audited financial statements, which are approximately 170 pages, a little bit more convenient to understand this for the June 30 16 statements, which were done during fiscal year 1617. Several of the funds that consolidate, were consolidated into the general fund, those that closed to the general fund, to simplify the presentation, which will facilitate the Open Gov as well as the long-term financial planning. That took me quite a lot of time. I was the one that did that. Another thing is that, for the first time this year in the audited financial statement, we included a table in the back that included our OPED cash. The current accounting standard does not take into consideration money that the given governmental entity may have set aside in a 115 trust. The new standard that will be effective June 30 of 2018 will take that into account. We first established the trust back in fiscal year 0809, and as of June 3017, we'll have approximately $1,600,000 in it. At June 3018, there'd be approximately $2,100,000 in it. And that, combined with the other changes that the council's done over recent years involving health savings accounts, will substantially decrease our long-term OPED liability, which in our case is our retiree health insurance. Last item I'll mention is that one of our side funds, the safety side fund, will be paid off as of June 30 this year. And that savings, which is approximately $350,000, we'll be setting that aside in another Section 115 trust, which is called a benefit, excuse me, a pension sustainability trust. And what that will do over the long term, and particularly when the miscellaneous side fund is paid off a couple of years from now, when that money goes in there, that will enable us to lower the impact on the ongoing operating budget of the increased pension costs. And those pension costs are primarily driven by, not the only factor, but one of the primary factors is longevity, because people are living longer, far longer than was the case 20 or 30 years ago. And with that, that's my presentation, and I turn it over to Dory, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
And so Daria is going to speak to our upcoming work plan for fiscal year 1718.
Good evening. In terms of finance goals for the next year, as the--sorry, thank you. As the town manager mentioned, one of the main goals will be to implement the Open Gov platform, which, as you know, is intended to increase transparency and improve financial reporting for the town's finances. And in connection with doing that, I will be looking into new financial software for the town. The town currently uses the Eden system, which is an older system, and Tyler Technologies, which is the owner of the Eden system, is encouraging its users to move on to its more modern and improved version, which is called Munis. And my hope is that if we do decide to purchase new financial software, that it would include a project accounting module, which would allow for more easy tracking of capital projects, as well as a fixed assets module, which would allow for the automated fixed assets maintenance and depreciation, and possibly employee self-service, where employees could go online to report their timesheets and to look up their, you know, their past paycheck stubs and vacation balances and that sort of thing. And also in connection with the Open Gov implementation, it's very likely that the chart of accounts will be changed, so I'll be doing that, so that it will be easier to have reporting. And also, it's my hope that an updated financial system will assist in financial forecasting and modeling for the town and also for the potential fire JPA. So that's what I will be working on.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the last page of the administrative finance overview, there are additional bullet points that we are working towards. And so they are listed later. I think I need to touch on them. The bulk of the work is going to be tied to finance, and we have a lot of work to do before us. I did want to share one change highlight that will be proposed and asked of the council at an upcoming meeting. Mike? And it will be that staff will be requesting the addition of a customer service representative to assist the front office, town clerk, and finance team. This position was frozen due to a retirement years ago, and over time, on and off, has been filled on a part-time basis. This is a necessary hire to provide quality customer service and support to our community, and it'll allow us, as staff, to complete projects and assignments that we are tasked to accomplish. And I think this is primarily as we reorganize our finance team and do assist the town clerk's office. I will be recommending this full-time position as a customer service representative. I will also say that we, as a staff, have went through the difficult process of change. And so over the last few months, our department heads have been challenged, as we look at this budget, to be fiscally responsible but sustainable in the good times and bad. It was, in most cases, basically starting from the ground up and rebuilding our departments. And operationally, what should we look like going forward? What are we trying to accomplish, and how are we going to accomplish it? And as you go through this, I'm going to, I'll speak to some of those organizational changes as the department heads come up to walk you through some of those changes. But with all of that, what I will tell you is that at the end of fiscal year 1718, we are projecting a surplus of over half a million dollars. And a large part of that is because of the changes operationally that we're making over the next 12 months. We are not reducing service delivery. In many cases, we're improving it. But I think we're looking at better ways to do things. And so we're going to start to talk about that and have that conversation as we go forward tonight and, again, next council meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, I'll start it off with our fire chief.
Any questions? Over here? No? Thanks.
T-shirts?
Thank you. I promised Chief Norton that I would go easy on him tonight, so I will fulfill that promise, because he gets to go next, and who knows what he has planned for me. So just to give you a little bit of a compilation of our tasks that were completed from fiscal year 2016, 2017. We continue to make progress toward consolidated services with the city of Larkspur. The two departments are currently operating as a functionally consolidated department. All personnel are being shared operationally and are being deployed to provide the most efficient and effective fire and EMS coverage throughout both communities. We sent firefighting crews to multiple major incidents outside the county through our participation in the California Master Mutual Aid Agreement. All overtime and maintenance costs associated with our responses to these incidents are fully reimbursed, and our participation provides valuable firefighting experience for our personnel that they wouldn't otherwise get in county.
Thank you. I promised Chief Norton that I would go easy on him tonight, so I will fulfill that promise, because he gets to go next, and who knows what he has planned for me. So just to give you a little bit of a compilation of our tasks that were completed from fiscal year 2016, 2017. We continue to make progress toward consolidated services with the city of Larkspur. The two departments are currently operating as a functionally consolidated department. All personnel are being shared operationally and are being deployed to provide the most efficient and effective fire and EMS coverage throughout both communities. We sent firefighting crews to multiple major incidents outside the county through our participation in the California Master Mutual Aid Agreement. All overtime and maintenance costs associated with our responses to these incidents are fully reimbursed, and our participation provides valuable firefighting experience for our personnel that they wouldn't otherwise get in county. We completed another firefighter recruitment and testing process, and through this process, we hired three additional firefighter paramedics to replace recent vacancies due to retirements. Our newest firefighters joined one other recruit hired on the Larkspur side of the shop, and after successfully completing our joint regional academy at the top of the class, the four recruits began completing rotations at all four stations and on each piece of the various department apparatus. We also presented and assisted with numerous CERT and Get Ready Disaster Preparedness classes, CPR and school safety training classes, and multiple station tours, and initiated the development of a new partnership with Ross Valley, Larkspur, and Kentfield Fire Departments for the sharing of fire prevention services, including plan review, inspection services, and code enforcement. And that's just another small example of what Mr. Cusmano was talking about, just finding better ways to do things more efficiently. And not only do we anticipate that that will save some money, but it'll also provide additional depth and specialization to the fire prevention world that we live in. Through the consolidation working group, we've made significant progress toward the blending of the two employee groups and a potential labor contract for the new organization. And just as a quick aside, last night, we had a very productive ad hoc consolidation committee meeting, and everybody that I spoke with after the meeting felt like we made more progress than we anticipated, and everybody's very enthusiastic and encouraged about what we're planning to do with the consolidation. So just some quick stats. The stats are a little bit difficult this year, because we are still utilizing two separate incident reporting systems. And so, trying to compile aggregate stats is a little bit difficult. But essentially, in the past 12 months, together, the two agencies together, acting as one, ran 3,768 incidents. 2,571 of those occurred within the communities of Larkspur and Corder Madera. Moving over to goals, consolidation is our number-one goal this year. Staff is developing a consolidation plan for the council and community to consider. The plan will include a complete consolidation of fire services between Corder Madera and Larkspur. Staff intends to use the experience of our current shared services to refine the operational considerations and inform the discussion regarding the financial feasibility and potential long-term benefit to both communities. Staff has also been working with other fire chiefs in the Ross Valley on the goal of developing a single fire prevention bureau for the entire valley, and the advantages of this model would include greater efficiency, more standardized approach to code enforcement, inspection services, and plan review. It would also enhance our ability to have a more specialized approach to the various areas of fire prevention and vegetation management. We would also like to develop a more comprehensive wellness and fitness program, which will include peer fitness trainers for the firefighters and peer support representatives to assist with the maintenance of both their physical and emotional health. Current partnerships that we are engaged in include the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, the Marin County Fire Investigation Team, the Marin County Hazardous Materials Response Team, the Marin County Urban Search and Rescue Team, and an agreement with the city of Larkspur for sharing of fire personnel. Dispatch services are currently provided by contract with the sheriff's office, and staff is continually looking into expanding opportunities with neighboring agencies. It's pretty remarkable, actually, on that last point, that we have members from our department on all of those specialized teams throughout the county. And so, we provide that service for other agencies when they need a hazardous materials team response, and then in kind, when, should we need that service, we get firefighters from all other areas in the county as well, responding to our area to help us. The fifth goal that we have is to support and facilitate with the Central Marin Training Consortium. This is a regional training consortium that consists of five local fire agencies, and the agency's pool resources and subject matter expertise to deliver high-quality, all-risk training to all of its members. And the successful program has greatly improved our training, but requires a high level of commitment and support in order to remain effective. And currently, one of our battalion chiefs is the chairperson for the overhead committee for that training consortium, and is doing a remarkable job. And lastly, the Marin County voters in 2014 approved funding for a new radio system, the MIRA radio system. And so, staff plans to continue to participate in the regional migration towards the new countywide emergency radio system. Just to wrap up, from a personal standpoint, I'd just like to say that I've had a fantastic year working in Corder Madera. It's been very challenging at times with what we're trying to do next door with the consolidation, but I've had a really great time working much more closely with all of the Corder Madera town employees and especially the department heads. And I very much appreciated the leadership that Todd Cusmano has provided and the energy and enthusiasm that keeps what is a pretty difficult task feeling pretty good, and I'm motivated every morning getting up, just trying to keep up with him. And I just can't express how proud I am to be a part of the group of employees that I'm leading over at the firehouse. I mean, these folks are incredibly capable, and I couldn't ask for a better group to work with. And if there are any questions, I'm here to answer.
Right. Well, first of all, I'd like to ask, Todd, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, just from, I think he did an excellent overview, I just wanted to add on the last page of labor, because it is tied to what we're doing. When you look at the labor positions, historically, we've had 20. You'll see 19. One of those 19 is a deputy fire chief. That's a placeholder for a potential consolidation. It is in the budget, so it's currently in the budget, but it's unfilled. And this is one of the things, when you start to go into, we're not cutting any firefighter positions. This is where, we're actually, the redundancies at the top of both organizations, we're able to share those redundancies, and so that's why you see one less. We're sharing a fire chief. And so, that is in the budget. Both sides, Corder Madera and Larkspur, have budgeted for a potential consolidation, because operationally, we are one. We look like one, and we're one financially. And so, I wanted to point that out within the budget. This is an approximate $400,000 reduction in our salary benefit model of previous years, to give you a perspective.
Excellent. Thank you. Carla?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, or a couple of points. First of all, I think that your switching to a fire marshal under contract is a good move. And I think that it makes a lot of sense on that. I do have a question. In reading this, we talk about the partnership with Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, but it doesn't specifically say that we are still going to maintain our paramedic service, which has been a revenue generator for us.
We plan to maintain our paramedic service.
Okay, because I read and reread, and I was concerned.
Our level of service and our paramedic certification and qualifications will remain. We're not changing anything on the street. What we're talking about with Ross Valley in the future is the possibility of changing how we administratively handle it. But the paramedic service and the quality care on the street will not change one bit.
Okay, great.
And we're maintaining that.
And then, the other thing, too, is just to make sure, if you would please, that Station 13 is staffed.
Always.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Slum, over here. Anybody have any questions? I just wanted to say one thing about the partnership with Ross Valley, Larkspur, Kentfield Fire for the fire prevention services. I'm very excited about that. Of course, I'm very excited about the consolidation. I think it's going to be great. We are, we will not have any degradation in our fire services and the consolidation with Larkspur. I think we'll have improvements. This is one area where I think we will definitely have improvements, because we will, by teaming up, we can get better quality service that we can share. So we're all sharing the overhead of that staffed position.
Precisely.
So, anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And thank you for your guidance and leadership over the past year. I really appreciate it, and I felt very supported right from day one. So I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Sorry, I forgot. There was one other thing. I have, you may not be able to tell by looking at me, but I have way more hair than the police chief.
I'm going to save that one. That's going to be good, okay. Mario, let's do our recreation. Mario, can you come up, please?
Good evening. Want to touch briefly on the past fiscal year. Really, really appreciate the guidance that Todd's given us. For the amount of times that my face has cringed and been challenged by him for the past six months, I'm sure he knows that this has been a rough few months, but it's been exciting, because the Park and Rec Department has been challenged in ways that it hasn't other ways. But to wrap up the past fiscal year, the big word has been centennial. We're finishing up our 100-year birthday, and the last six months of the fiscal year has, or the first part of the fiscal year has embodied that. The staff, I want to say, has had a lot of fun providing quality, exciting, different programs and events for the community. They've really had a good time seeing the faces and the energy the community is engaged in. So we really, really had a really unique opportunity to do that, because I feel like that's not something that we'd probably experience in other communities. So really appreciate that. To sort of touch on some facts and some numbers for the department, and this is one of the things that the town managers really challenge us with, is to look at really who we're serving. We've served over 15,000 families, or individuals, and 7,000 families in the town of Corder Madera and Larkspur and the greater Marin area in the past couple of years. And over almost 4,000 individuals have participated in different programs and events and activities. And that's 4,000 people walking through our automatic doors, going in and out of our bathrooms, and going through our community center, which we really appreciate, because really showing off the community center, the rehab that we've done over the past several years is something that we're really proud of, and really want to make sure that the community is engaged in and sees that. I got to say, seeing folks who've come in to the community center, who maybe have not walked in in 10 or 15 years, who maybe got married there 10 or 15 years ago and see it as a different venue, has really been exciting. So really, re-engage in a different, another segment of the population that we haven't been able to in the past has been, has been really great. A couple of different numbers as well, is our front office processes almost 7,000 phone calls a year, which is a huge amount. And I want to say that not all of those phone calls have anything to do with the Park and Rec Department. But we're happy to direct and guide people and families and the community to different services and different aspects of the community that they may be looking for. They may be looking for the building department. They may be looking for age-friendly. They may be looking for the Larkspur Recreation Department. But we're happy to direct them. We're really happy to try to help, help them get to where they need to. And I think the staff is really a great group of folks that has spent a lot of time in Corder Madera. They know the community, and they know how to access the information and know how to access the pertinent details to get folks what they need to know. So it's, it's really, in terms of looking at the details, it's really been a lot, really interesting to see how that, those numbers translate to service. One thing I want to talk about is our technology system. Our website, in terms of how we process transactions for community programs and events, is something that needs some work. And staff has really taken upon itself to look at the very specific challenges that we have with our technology. And in terms of the numbers that we have, you may see in front of you what we process in-house versus what we process online. And in terms of following a goal for the next fiscal year, and those are numbers that really should be flipped around. We should be doing the majority of our services online. We should be able to be, to get the information out to our community as effectively as we can online. And I think that's one of our challenges, and that's one of our goals for the upcoming fiscal year, is to make sure that we really continue to improve on that and make sure that we get that information out, whether it be through social media or marketing efforts, and looking at, and how we can best serve the community in that way. Couple of other items to touch on for the upcoming fiscal year would be to really look at how we operate the community center in terms of rentals and community use. I think it's something that's overdue in terms of trying to seek opportunities for different groups and community groups to use the space more effectively and more efficiently. We certainly want to, as well, in combination with that, look at different programs that we can offer that would really bring the community into a more engaged environment inside the community center, and really utilize that title of community center and make sure that we're really looking towards the future as to how that can best offer services for the community. So with that, love to highlight the special events that we've done for the centennial. It's been a lot of fun, like I said before, and we're looking forward to another great year. But be happy to answer any questions regarding that going forward.
Okay. Questions?
I just, I just want to thank Park and Rec for all the support during this centennial. I mean, I know that you all operated on overload, and particularly for your support of age-friendly. And because of Park and Rec's cooperation, age-friendly Corder Madera is really, you know, becoming known throughout the community and the county. And thank you very much for that, Mario.
Happy to, yeah.
Thank you, Mario. It was an extraordinary centennial year. I just had a question about, could you define the word "transactions" in context here? What do you mean by that? And underneath, like, what's an example of a transaction?
A person goes online to register their child for, or themselves for a special event, or for soccer, for example, or summer playground, versus them calling in physically to our office and getting somebody live and processing that transaction over the phone.
Both of those would be a transaction, though.
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions over here? I have a question. Under the 2016, 2017 accomplishments, you listed remodeled community center offices. Can you describe that a little bit, and is there further work going on that you anticipate next year?
Sure, absolutely. So, the back offices of the community center were remodeled this last year during the holiday break. We had a very specific short-term window that was allowed to us through our normal renters, who were not going to be using the building for two and a half weeks. So we took the opportunity to replace the carpet and paint the back offices and do some electrical work, as well as some network work with the help of Michael Deng, our IT guru, in the back office. So that's all specifically, not the lobby, but the back offices that were done. We don't anticipate any further work to our infrastructure as, at the moment. There may be some computer upgrades in the upcoming years, but nothing right, nothing current.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I also wanted to echo what Carla said about all your help this year for the centennial and with age-friendly Corder Madera. And please extend that to your staff, too.
Thank you, absolutely, we'll do.
All right. Thanks. Did you have anything to add?
Really quickly, Madam Mayor, members of the council, just one thing. And Mario has really, because we have a cost recovery component to Park and Rec, has really been challenged, and we've been working has really been challenged, and we've been working a lot to really kind of formalize and evaluate everything that we do, and really start from the ground up. And I wanted to point to the goals and work plan because, basically, staff, it's gonna be Mario and myself, we're gonna work closely with the Park and Rec Commission to evaluate the town parks and facilities and the current cost recovery model based on, and based on that analysis, we're gonna come back to council with some recommended changes as appropriate. Something else that isn't in this work plan that is very important to the Park and Rec side is the sales tax override. The sales tax override, the community listed a number of things that they would like to see that sales tax used for, and one of them are senior and youth programs. To date, we really haven't budgeted for those senior and youth programs. This fiscal year, we will. You'll see in the proposed budget a $30,000 expenditure request for senior and youth programs. And it's gonna start with, we're gonna recommend a coordinator position to really take the program, work under Mario and within Mario's offices at the community center, and build a program for us. And that's step one of this fiscal year. Step two will be, then, what programs should we be providing? And to talk about that. And we believe we have a budget to do that. The third component speaks to the question that you asked, Madam Mayor, would be, are there any renovations or anything that we would do to the community center? And there will be an evaluation based on that information from our expert of, do we have to do anything to have these types of programs within our community center or our infrastructure? So you'll see the first part within the budget, $30,000 coordinator position. There'll be two more steps within this fiscal year if we do it the right way. We wanna take our time and have a nice thoughtful process with the Park and Rec Commission to really get their feedback and input, and come back to you with the commission with some recommendations. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mario.
Thank you.
Let's move to Department of Public Works Engineering.
Thank you. Not right now. We'll get to that on the next, on the next item. So it's nice to be able to come to a budget meeting and focus on one department rather than all the departments. I'm sure Todd can appreciate that. But anyhow, so, yeah, we wanna talk about Public Works Engineering. You know, we split engineering and maintenance several years ago. Now address the engineering side of Public Works right now. And it's typical for people to think engineering, you know, they think capital improvement program, and that it certainly is the biggest part of what we do. This past year, we managed $3.75 million of town projects and over $4 million of sanitary projects. What often gets overlooked are the day-to-day activities that, which often consume an inordinate amount of our time. These include issuing and monitoring encroachment permits, grading permits, storm water pollution control permits, water course alteration permits, floodplain development permits, and sewer permits, to name some of them. We also staff the flood control board, which is Kelly Crowe, who normally staffs that, and the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, which is staffed by Nisha Patel, both senior engineers. And then we're, as you know, responsible for monitoring all traffic-related issues. We maintain all the traffic control devices, conduct traffic studies when issues come up, and we investigate ways to improve traffic conditions, working closely with the police department on that. Of course, we work with other departments on the approval of private development. We inspect that development, ensure that it complies with all the conditions of approval. Then our goals and objectives for the coming year, I guess I could sum them up in a couple of words, and that's more of the same. Capital improvement program for fiscal year 17, 18 is ambitious, and perhaps overly ambitious. I do wanna say that. We've listed, and we'll get to that at a separate item tonight, 6.1 million in town expenditures and 2.1 million in sanitary expenditures. And I have to say, over all the years, I've never seen us expend everything we had in a budget. But again, it's ambitious. You start with what you hope you can do, and you end up with the best you can do. And that's, that's our goal for this upcoming years. It always has been. And I do, this is most important, I do wanna say, everything I've cited above, we do with four employees. We have two engineers, two senior engineers, Nisha Patel and Kelly Crowe, as I mentioned, and we have one customer service representative, Samantha Baroy, who hopefully you've all met, and works downstairs at the counter. And then last but least, we have one director of Public Works, which is me. So I really wanna take, finally take this opportunity to commend the staff. They're intelligent, hardworking, they're dedicated to improving quality of life for residents of Corder Madera. I've found that, I am very proud of the small staff that we have and what they do. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Todd, did you wanna add anything at this point? Okay. Questions? Over here? Sloan?
Nice work.
Over there?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I hate to throw this on you, but it's another.
I'm used to it.
Another item for the 2017-2018 goals and work plan. I attended a meeting of the Sea Level Rise Committee for the county. And I know Kelly Crowe goes to those meetings. In fact, I saw him there. There is a call for submissions of sites by this new group, Resilient by Design. I'll speak to that in a few minutes, but it appears that tackling sea level rise is going to start becoming more and more time-consuming, likely, for the various towns in the county. But hopefully, there might be some opportunities to partner with some other agencies. So I would like you to kind of consider, in the back of your head, or maybe as an addition to this, that that's something that's probably gonna need some attention, is maybe coming up with ideas for projects that we could partner with and hopefully go out and try to get some grant money.
I appreciate that, and we will pay close attention to that. Kelly is very good with that. He both monitors that, he briefs me on it every meeting he goes to. And while we're on the subject of Kelly, he's also very well-versed in the FEMA issues, floodplain issues. He handles that, and he does update me constantly on that, too. And that's another one. That and water pollution control is another area that's going to increase in, I guess, staff time, you know, will take up more and more staff time in the upcoming years. So probably eventually, I'll, I'll come in here and say, hey, we need more than those four employees that I cited, but I won't do that to Todd right now.
Okay.
Okay. Be that.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Dave.
Michael Palmer, can you come up? Michael's our superintendent of field operations and maintenance within the Public Works, and he is soon to be our permanent superintendent. Right now, he's been in the acting position, but we're working our way to a permanent position. He's been doing an outstanding job, and as you'll see in his overview, he has a lot on his plate. And at the end, again, I'll touch on some organizational changes we're going through this next fiscal year.
Thank you. The Field Operations and Maintenance Division of Public Works is, Public Works Department is responsible for the routine maintenance of town streets, medians, parking lots, drainageways, lagoons, and marshes. A significant amount of attention is paid to the town's storm drainage system, including maintenance, storm preparation, and emergency response during storms. In addition, staff is responsible for maintaining the town's parks and community gathering areas, such as Town Park, Miki Park, and what is now the Cove Park, and for the maintenance and upkeep of the landscaped areas surrounding town-owned facilities. The department takes significant pride in its maintenance of streets, medians, and parkways. Finally, staff also functions as the maintenance staff of Sanitary District 2, and is responsible for the maintenance and of all sanitary facilities. Accomplishments for the past year, this past winter was one of the wettest in recent history. All of our drainage facilities and sanitary facilities functioned well throughout the winter season due to a high level of maintenance. Staff continues to work with utility companies and private developers to ensure that the town's infrastructure is not compromised by their activities. 2017-2018 changes and highlights, Field Operations and Maintenance plans on adding three maintenance workers to its staff in the upcoming fiscal year. This will help to replace positions that were frozen due to budgetary constraints over the past eight years. 2017-18 goals, focus on internal operations and continue to improve productivity and efficiency through teamwork, cross-training, and accountability. Continue to proactively work with residents, utilities, and contractors to abate traffic safety and other hazards in the public right-of-way. Begin training and work on storm water improvements as required by state while looking for ways to improve maintenance on the medians and parks, along with ADA improvements in the parks and buildings. Any questions?
Do you have anything to add?
I just have to say, please pass it along to your staff. The medians and the hanging baskets are absolutely spectacular.
Thank you.
It really makes me so proud of the town.
Thank you. I will pass that on, definitely.
Thank you.
Michael's summary of what they do just does not do it justice. They really do an outstanding job. What I'll tell you is that we really looked under the labor side, the salary benefits model here. We did double up on our maintenance workers. We went from three to six. What we tried to do is we tried to flatten the top of the organization and change the chain of command within Public Works. And so Dave Bracken oversees Public Works Engineering and Maintenance. You know, as with the retirement of Kevin Kramer as our department head within, on the maintenance side, it was a big loss. Michael has big shoes to fill, but we did not fill that position. And so Michael now took over the leadership supervisory role within maintenance. Dave is his supervisor and helps him with all things Public Works. Then we did an analysis, and we looked at how we're situated amongst our, how we used our senior maintenance workers, our maintenance workers, how much overtime we are spending, and how much we're spending on contract work. And so that's still an analysis that's ongoing, but today, I can tell you, based on that analysis of the best way to basically get the most bang for our dollar, so to speak, it was to hire, to hire three additional maintenance workers, flatten the organization at the top, and then really focus on an operational structure of what do we accomplish every day, what's our minimum staffing, our worst times of the year, really doing an analysis and try to make sure we provide the best service. And in doing that, that is this model. Our contract services work has gone down. Our overtime has been cut by 35%, and you'll see a salary benefit overall savings of prior fiscal years by about $180,000. And so that'll continue to work now as we go forward. Again, he's got a big job to fill, and we wanna make sure he has the tools to do it. And so we think this is a good start to maintaining and improving service in Public Works. So thank you for all your work, Michael.
Thank you.
And congratulations on the promotion.
Appreciate it.
Hold on, don't go anywhere. Todd, I'd like to follow up on what you were just talking about with the staffing. I recognize that our infrastructure, especially our flood control infrastructure, is very sophisticated. In fact, I gave a presentation a while back on our flood control system to an environmental group. And in researching it, I was really very surprised at just how extensive our system is. We have two canals, what is it, nine pump stations, or is it all? 11 pump stations. I believe we have six retention basins, one detention basin. And I don't know how many miles the storm drains, but it's a very impressive system that, by the way, was designed by David Bracken here. Do we have any risk in eliminating one of the senior maintenance workers and a half, an equipment mechanic? Because I just wanna make sure that we have folks coming up through the ranks that are well-versed in how to maintain this very sophisticated system.
It's a great question, and that's exactly what we're doing. And it starts with recruitment or retention. And so really sitting down with Dave, Kevin, Kevin's still available to us to really talk about that, and Michael, and go, look, what are we trying to accomplish? And that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. And so this organizational chart will change as we go forward, but the idea is to teach someone how to build the clock, and then have them move forward and teach others how to do it, so to speak. And that's our infrastructure. And so we started a recruitment campaign, and really, we looked at a different model type of employee in maintenance with the intent that they would stay and that we could build them up through the ranks and their expertise. And so today, these positions are needed and necessary. We will not lose any service delivery having one less senior maintenance worker. But the day comes that we have someone that meets that criteria, you will probably see a recommendation to fill and have a third, you know, senior maintenance worker. We're really looking at how we just operate operationally from the top down. You know, when you have someone like Dave Bracken, who can be, can build an infrastructure with flood control like he did, it's like once-in-a-lifetime type of person, or George Warman, that can do finance for 40 years and build and put us in the financial state that we're in today. And a Kevin Kramer that worked for us for 30 years, you know, we relied on those people, and we've been very lucky to have them, but they don't come around every day. No bias to any of us that are succeeding them. And so we have to look at succession planning and building the model where multiple people can do the job and understand what the history is and what our systems entail. And that's what's before us. We're under the time crunch. And so I think, I think we're positioned well for succession planning in the future.
Excellent, thank you. Sloan?
Thank you. Was it your staff that was out there during the, during the heavy rainstorms and the rain gear over in East Corder Madera? The one, I mean, it's extraordinary work, Herculean efforts, when most of us received complimentary emails about that work. And that is so nice and rewarding. And I just wanted to pass on to you how much we appreciate those, you know, humping in the rain gear with the terrible, terrible, well beyond what you're being paid on an hourly basis to do. That's please express to all your people. That is greatly appreciated.
I sure will. Thank you very much.
Anything over here?
I just wanna add to what Sloan just said.
Sorry.
Which is, you guys have a unique job in that no one knows how good a job you're doing until you're not doing it.
Yeah.
And with the rain we had, I drive around the county a lot, and I always saw flooding and problems and clogged drains. I never saw a clogged drain in Corder Madera all winter. It was crazy.
Try to get there before you do.
You guys are doing a really, really amazing job, and we're all thankful for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And might I also say that I, yeah, don't go anywhere.
Okay.
You got a few more thank yous.
We're the ones that hear about it when the drains are clogged.
But I also would hear somebody going around with the street sweeper, the cute new bright blue street cleaner, at all hours of the night.
Yes.
Because we were expecting even more rain. And it's just amazing that you guys didn't have, that I could see a single clogged drain, as Bob mentioned.
Yeah.
So, excellent work.
Pick it up before it gets in the drains. That's our.
Are there any other questions or comments, or thank yous?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
All right. Chief Norton, good luck to go after that one.
Oh, wow. It's not that exciting.
Boom!
Groans from the other department heads. This is to make up for how unprepared I was from our Larkspur presentation, where all I did was make fun of the fire chief for five minutes to cover. So he did take the high road on this, and I appreciate that. I'm gonna, in your packets, I noticed you have the little synopsis I wrote. So I'm not gonna go through all of it, but I'll touch on a few high points. Not gonna use a lot of numbers, not a lot of big words. That way, the chief shirts can follow along. And. So as, maybe not everyone in the room knows, so I'll give a brief overview of what the Central Marin Police Authority is, just in case someone doesn't know. We were formed in 2013 between the Santa Salmo Police Department and the Twin Cities Police Department, which had been around since 1980 as Larkspur and Corder Madera. My bosses are the managers from each town, as well as the police council. And the police council is made up from two current council members from each town, and they sit on a police council. So for Corder Madera, it's Mayor First and Vice Mayor Condon are on the police council. So this is a little weird. We did pass our budget already, and that's always done in advance of the town's budget, so then they can take that amount and work their budgets around it. So that was passed a couple of weeks ago. So that was passed a couple of weeks ago. But I did want to just say, for those of you that are aware of how our budgeting works, we do, the current funding formula for Cordermadera was twenty-seven point eight-six percent. Larkspur was thirty-three point seven-one, and San Anselmo was thirty-eight point four-three for this year. And then in terms of our accomplishments for sixteen and seventeen, we went through kind of a lot over this fiscal year, and one of the big challenges we faced right off the bat was leadership change and succession planning, including myself. So I think everyone knows, your current town manager used to be our police chief. But, and all the slides from today, just to do a little shout out to our press information officer, Margot, these are all Twitter feeds from throughout the year. So I thought, you know, she does a great job. A lot of people don't follow us still on Facebook and Twitter, so I thought I'd do a little plug as we go through some of these. So in terms of leadership, this fiscal year, there's a new chief, a new captain, a new lieutenant, two new sergeants, four new corporals, and I believe four new officers. And the two I just sworn last week are kind of particularly special, and that's Charlene Cunningham and Juliana Draco. Charlene has been an employee with us for, us and San Anselmo for over ten years. She was in evidence tech, she went to the academy, she did a great job, and she's one of our newest officers, is this, there she is. And then Juliana, which you can kind of see blurry, she's kind of neat, she was born and raised in Cordermadera, on the east side, and she was an explorer with us years ago in high school and went on to be a cadet with us, and now she's going to be a new police officer starting last week. So that's kind of neat. We also did our first-ever Citizens Academy this year, and this was kind of fun where we invited the community to come in, and we took five members for our inaugural class from each town, five from Cordermadera, Larkspur, and San Anselmo. And from everything we could tell, it was a big success, and this led to something I'll talk on later, one of our next goals, which is increasing our volunteers. And we actually were able to get three people out of this class who are, I'm going through the background right now, to be volunteers with us, which is huge in terms of delivering services and cost savings, because a lot of what we do can be done by volunteers. We did a National Night Out this year, that was in, and we'll be doing it again, but it was in August or September. This is San Anselmo right here, this is our square. We also held it at our police station parking lot, and we had a really great turnout, we served some food, had jumpy's, fire department came out, CHP, the sheriff, and it was, it's a nationwide thing, but it was just kind of, as we go along, you'll see, it's just part of my goal to not only increase our social media presence and all that, but actually interact with the community more on things that aren't crisis. You know, it's not a traffic stop, it's not your house is broken into, your car was stolen, but just kind of that good stuff. We have forty-two sworn officers, and all of them are amazing, and I know they're amazing, but a lot of people don't know that. They might just know them as the person who gave them a ticket for going through a stop sign. And so we want to get them out doing more things like this, and that's going to be one of our big goals going forward. This is also, Pokemon was big when we did National Night Out, so I just wanted to show that was kind of cool. We also started a Coffee with a Cop in December, and we've been doing that every other month. We go out every other month to, we're going to be switching in the summer, because I'm not a big coffee person, I like ice cream, so look for us at the ice cream parlors, or frozen yogurt, it's going to be a little healthy. And this is, there's a shot of me, I think at the Bon Air, this is Bon Air Pete's, but we do go to, every other month we hit a coffee shop in each jurisdiction. And it's been really great. I've really enjoyed it myself, and I think the people who've attended have enjoyed it. And our crowds have ranged from, even though it only looks like five people are there, there was actually about twelve. We've gotten up to twenty people, we've gotten as few as four or five. The smaller groups have actually been the greatest, and usually I kind of have to kick them out after over an hour, because I got to get going, but they've gone really well. I'll get to this in a moment. So other than what I hit on, some of the other things I'm proud of is, we did a lot of training this year, especially in de-escalation tactics, which is kind of the big thing in dealing with mentally, people with mental health problems. We did receive a twenty-five thousand alcohol beverage control grant, which we've been working through, and I just found out this week that we got another grant for about the same much for this next fiscal year. So that's good news. Terms of budget highlights, the budget did go up, well, I got two handouts that I wanted to share. I know. Our budget did go up this year. A main part of that, Cordermadera's share went up two-hundred-and-two-thousand, ninety-five thousand of that was to go towards a reserve fund to offset a deficit from a couple of years ago, but it also gives us that protection going forward, so if we go over budget a little bit, we have that cushion. The other areas that caused the increase were raises that were already built in into the MOU for current sworn and non-s sworn employees, there was an increase to the insurance workers' compensation fund, there was an increase to the contract services account to offset IT technology costs, and end-of-life equipment issues, and finally, an increase to the vehicle replacement fund to offset an aging fleet we have. The handouts I gave you, I apologize, I don't have a slide for them, but I did want to just point out, many of you have probably seen these before, on the one that says ten-year cost of shares trend, if you look at Cordermadera's, it's interesting because in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, ten years ago, Cordermadera, for police services, the Twin Cities Police Department paid three-point-two million dollars. After all these increases in ten years have passed, this year, Cordermadera's share is three-point-one million dollars. It's gone up a hundred thousand dollars over ten years. That's a big deal, because normally in most jurisdictions, you would see those increases. If you look at San Anselmo before they merged with us, you see increases of anywhere from a hundred to two-hundred a year, not a hundred over ten years. And then finally, the other sheet I gave you, the cost of police municipal services per resident, I just wanted to point out that compared to all the other jurisdictions in Marin County, the cost per resident for Central Marin Police Services is three-hundred-and-one dollars a year. When you compare that to some of the other cities at the top that pay almost eight-hundred dollars per resident per year, that's pretty significant. And the only one that basically delivers police services at a lower cost per resident is the city or town of Nevada. I'm not sure if they're considered a city or town. And then you can see below that exactly how much it costs per resident between Larkspur, Cordermadera, and San Anselmo. You may be wondering why Cordermadera pays more per resident than, say, Larkspur, even though Larkspur has a bigger population. That's because of the shopping centers mainly. We get a lot of calls for service, and that's how our budget and funding formula is broken down. Quickly with statistics, I don't want to give you a bunch of those, because I know we presented a statistics report a few months ago, but we did have forty thousand calls for service between our three jurisdictions last year. That's a lot when you think about it, forty thousand in a year. And just in Cordermadera alone, we had eleven thousand calls for service, twenty-five hundred of those were just in Cordermadera Town Center and the Village. And in terms of community outreach, I'll just click through these fast, because I know I'm gone over my five minutes. This is us, I was actually out there, and I just really like this picture especially, that's a Nevada captain, but that's one of my officers right there, Enrique Lopez. This was the Special Olympics, which was two weeks ago, and it was a great time. Here's Bobby and Elmer out at a preschool, just doing a visit, handing out stickers. Here's a Girl Scout Daisy Tour that came to our station, and we're fingerprinting them and giving them the whole go-through. This is the turkey trot, and you can see we had an officer stop by. That's our big thing, is we always try and have officers stop by to your events. Sometimes we can't, but we always try to, and it's, that's a big emphasis going forward. So that's the Cordermadera turkey trot. Here's one of our newer officers, for those of you that knew, former Larkspur Fire Chief, Bob Semet, that's his son Kevin, who we picked up a few months ago, reading to elementary school. This is trick-or-treating in San Anselmo, our station's right downtown, so we get trick-or-treaters, and there's one of our detectives, Cody. This is a tug-of-war, I wasn't even sure what this was, but they just were driving by and saw this Big Brothers Big Sister event, and just jumped out of their car and got involved. And there's Jenna and Aaron. I hope they won. I don't know, it looks like they're struggling a little bit. And just social media, we tried to do a lot with the storms and other events, and for those of you who don't follow us, please get on, there's some cool stuff. Here's Elmer in a massive rainstorm giving out a ticket, I'm not sure what he was doing. There's San Anselmo after the big storms with a nice little rainbow. This is, we had a big fire on Red Hill due to a homeless encampment, and that was just kind of a neat action shot of the plane coming in and dropping that. They contained that to just two acres, I think. Do you remember, did you go out on that one? Did you guys help out? Yeah, it was very small, it's amazing how accurate those planes are when they drop that. And then two, on to two fun ones. Anyone who's been in my office knows I'm a big Star Wars nerd. This is the Yoda statue in San Anselmo, and our PIO did a, during the holidays, did an elf-on-a-shelf thing, moving the elf all over the jurisdictions and taking photos, and that's the elf with the Chewbacca outfit, so it's my favorite one. And then on May the fourth, is May the Fourth Be With You Day, which is National Star Wars Day. So we did a bunch of outreach on that day, and that's my favorite picture, honestly. I hope the pictures helped you follow along, chief shirts. And before I turn it over to questions, I did, I would like to add with regards to the hair, that I did shave right before my meeting. And he's been growing his hair out for eight months, and that's what it looks like.
Time to wrap it up, chief.
All right.
Now, you didn't mention that the Central Marin Police Twitter account is now being followed by Krispy Kreme.
I did not know that. We have, we have like, I think our Twitter account has like twenty-five hundred followers now, which is pretty cool. Some of the neat things, like with this one, is the way the retreats work, like ABC News and Cheryl Jennings retweeted some of these, and that's kind of neat, because it shoots it out to the whole Bay Area or even beyond. Any questions?
Did you have anything to add, Todd? All right, questions?
Thank you.
Questions down here, no? I just wanted to specifically thank you for emphasizing the de-escalation tactics and say that, you know, in my opinion, that is just one of the most important things that the police authority can do to ensure safety not only of our officers but of the community and keep us out of the headlines, so keep up the good work.
A lot of the incidents that happen, not only in California but around the nation, a lot of the people that end up getting critically injured or injured, they have mental health problems. It always comes out after the fact, but it's hard for an officer who goes out if they've never dealt with a person to tell right away. And one thing that's great is, gosh, I think for, it must be going on over fifteen years now, in Marin County, they were one of the first in the nation to do crisis intervention training. It's a week-long CAS where you learn about mental health issues, you learn about homeless issues and all this great stuff, and you can apply that to the skills you have already to de-escalate. So even though that's the new catchphrase, de-escalation, we've actually been doing it for over fifteen years, and we have every single person that becomes a police officer with us go through that week-long training as soon as possible. So Officer Semet and Officer Vega, who just started with us off FTO, just went and completed it last week.
Great.
Say one thing, Todd.
Sure.
Yeah, and also to just offer a compliment to Margot Rohrbacher, who's really being, just doing a terrific job as public information officer and keeping the whole community aware of all that you're doing. I always felt that police wasn't getting enough credit for all that you do, and I think she's really doing a very effective job of getting the word out.
I'll pass that along to her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Adam Watt, our planning and building director. Brian, come up as well.
And do the building department side of things, but we're going to try to keep this really brief. I'm going to pick up on a couple of things that were said. I know Mario said seven thousand calls, I think he said forty thousand calls, we had six-hundred-million calls. Down at the planning and building department, so.
That was just last week.
Yeah. No, actually, it is something that I would like to actually get a metric on, so that we can actually track how many calls we do get per year, because it's a lot, and anyways, wanted to work that in there. And clearly, having me follow Mike Norton, who spent probably a good month or so working on that PowerPoint. I appreciate that, Todd, clearly some favoritism going on there still. But no, to be real brief, I think many of you know a lot of the things that we do with, in the planning department, I see you from time to time up here giving presentations. From my perspective, it can be sometimes hard to see what success looks like in the planning department and what we do, and given some of the upset faces we see from time to time in some of our public hearings. But I think I'd like to just touch on the fact that the completion of the Tamil Vista Boulevard Quarter Study, the adoption of the mixed-use MX-1 district last year, I think is about as close as you can get to what I would consider success. Obviously, that's just part of the process, but thinking back where we were in two thousand and fourteen, the conversation and dialogue that we had through that process, and then ultimately seeing that through to public hearings and getting something through and adopted, that I think property owners, many members of the public, and those observing all felt was acceptable, is an accomplishment that I'd like to just point out. I think to follow that up, we did also, through that process, I think get, which I think sometimes you don't get, but you get an application or an applicant who actually seeks to utilize those new regulations and put forth effort to put in an application that sort of complies with those rules. And I do think, at the end of the day, those rules do have a real potential to be transformative for that area of town. So I'm excited to see what happens there, obviously still a long ways to go with some of the actual development and process there. I'm not going to touch on too much in the past. We did get through about seventy-eight, eighty entitlement applications with two, I think about two appeals, which I think is, is some, really speaks to, I think, some of the work of our staff, some of the upfront work they do there, in sort of trying to resolve problems beforehand, also the planning commission and the work they do as well, in really vetting projects and trying to see that they are doing, the projects are making all the findings and are sort of thoroughly considered and vetted and are coming to rational, reasoned conclusions on some of the decisions they make. Moving forward, we obviously have a significant number of major development projects that we'll be reviewing and processing and facilitating the public land use process, and that's a major part of what we do, is really trying to set up a land use process for public comment and some reasoned, rational dialogue, and getting sort of the issues vetted in a public forum, which is not always easy, but I think we've been doing a pretty successful job of that. Always room for improvement, and we'll continue to do so. Some of the other things I'm hoping we can get to this year are updating some of our development fees, and that's including traffic mitigation fee, which hasn't been updated since the early eighties, which I think can be used and should be used really as a way to fund some of the important mitigation or traffic mitigation measures that we could, we could ultimately, that Dave may be able to use in the future on some of his projects, we'll see. But that's behind there, and some of the affordable housing fees as well, and considering potentially a general plan maintenance fee as, before you know it, that's going to be around the corner, given that the last time around, I think it took a good seven, eight years to get to adoption in two thousand and nine, and those documents generally get updated every twenty years.
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, there you go, George. Right. George is on me about that one, so.
From the audience, George said seven hundred thousand?
And I think.
Not including staff.
Not including staff.
And I know, in fact, Sausalito, I know that they just budgeted their recent update at a million dollars around, so. So with that, I'm going to end there. I do want to just say, as of now, I am, we have a, just mentioning the planning staff and building staff, I'm actually now the senior employee of our department at almost three years now, so it's been a real overhaul, entire overhaul of our department in terms of staff, and I'm just thrilled with the people we have. I mean, we're really, all of us, really focused on providing customer service, the best customer service we can, being thorough, trying to, you know, obviously integrity is a big part of what we do, we have to be trusted sources of information to the public, contractors to development community, being fair and objective are also some of our goals, and I think everyone that, everyone really embodies that downstairs, so pleased with that. I'm happy to have Brian go, and then maybe we can, or I'm happy to answer questions beforehand, but.
Why don't you have Brian go, and then we can ask questions together, if that's all right? Thank you.
Council members? Well, I'll be really short, because I'm the closing act. You know what Adam talked about with the planning department and, you know, [inaudible]. You know what Adam talked about with the planning department and, you know, concepts and use and things like that? Building department handles nuts and bolts of how a building is put together. You know, hopefully to keep that building up, keep it from sinking into the mud, you know, having it fall down, heaven forbid having it burned down. I think you all know how plans are submitted, they're routed to every department for review. You know, they go through a thorough review for codes and standards and, and once approved, permits can be issued and construction can begin. We have a great inspection team that manages, I think, probably 1,600 building inspections a year. And also in the approval process is other agencies, Marin County Health, Air Quality Control, Water Quality, BCDC. And so that's really it in a nutshell. It's just about safety and building health and personal health and the health of our community.
Great. Thank you. Anything to add, Todd?
Just really quickly, I'm just going to say that I think the two of them have one of the most difficult jobs within the town. It's a thankless job, it's a difficult job, and I think we have the right two people because they both have those interpersonal skills, that special touch. They're very thoughtful in their approach. They find a way to say yes to our residents. All things being close to equal, we swing the way of our residents and our community and that's the way it should be. It's very interpretive, it's very difficult. And our projects, you know, we know them and some that they've inherited, I just can't say enough, I think we have the right people for the job and I think they're doing a good, they're doing a great job. And so I'm appreciative of all their work. So thank you. We've also added a code enforcement officer within this fiscal year. I believe it's $30,000 to $50,000. It's, it's to handle those issues in our neighborhoods that we really struggle with. And one you'll hear in the next agenda item up on Summit. And so we were hoping that helps alleviate the pressure of our staff and allows us to really problem solve and help our community with some of these issues. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I do, I do have one. Thank you, thank you both. And thank you, Adam, in particular. Well, you should know that we recognize how challenging the position is and you're on the front lines again and again and again. And we get that. And you have the right attitude and perspective. My question, maybe Todd touched on it there, do you have enough people?
Yeah. Well, let me, let me try to answer that. No, I mean, look, I think one of the things I did want to point out, and this relates to upcoming, the upcoming year with some of these larger projects, what we have done from, to expand our capacity is to hire some contract planners to basically just project-manage applications. So we obviously know how much time it takes and we're still very much involved in those applications, I should say. But we know how much time it takes from a day-to-day basis to review applications. We know the expectation is that on the especially large controversial projects, it's going to be staff that's going to be working on those. So some of the other projects that we see where we can, and some of it's just trying to anticipate the workload in advance, we have gone out and hired contract planners, which again is not, that's paid for by the development community or the applicant. They pay for staff time as well as a contract planner. So I feel, I feel like we have the right amount of people. I mean, it can change. It's something to reassess. I like our team and I think we have good people who are, again, I think are, time and time again, we're all talking about dedicated staff who are there to do, you know, the best job and are passionate about their work. So I think for now, the answer is yes. And I appreciate the question, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions down here? Thank you very much. Closing remarks?
At the end of our presentations, I want to say, and I think it speaks for itself, but it's an impressive group and when they get together and they problem solve something.
Mike?
It is really something to watch. And so I appreciate everybody, all of our staff. Thank you for all your work and we're excited to present the budget next council meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to staffing and the town work plan? I'm sorry, got to step up to the podium. We do video record all of our meetings and the folks at home will not be able to hear you unless you speak into the microphone.
I thank you, everyone, for putting up with my diatribe about world, history and world politics. This was all stuck in my mind. The second thing is, the Court of Madera Town Band, if anyone is in Golden Gate Park next Saturday, we're playing there at the concourse. And then the following, that's on the 11th, and then on the 18th, it's Sunday, we'll be right here at Piccolo Plaza. And then there's a parade coming up. Can't remember, what date is that? July 4th, okay? And I thank Todd and Dave, they're ensuring that we, some of those that don't want to walk the course, myself included, they're arranging again this year for a flatbed truck. And we will be sitting on haystacks and playing patriotic music. So, thank you.
All right, we'll see you at the parade. Thanks. All right. Thank you all for your patience and we are getting closer to the, I know the folks in the audience are probably here for the, the item on, is it Summit?
No.
We've got a few things to take care of before that. Let's try to get through this as quickly as possible. Town manager and council reports. Todd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Actually, we moved to, because we had a feeling they would be sitting here through the presentations. And so to, to help our neighbors up on Summit, we moved it to my report. And so what I would like to do is provide.
Oh, there it is. Thank you.
An update on the construction progress at 310 Summit. And as a reminder, you should have a memo in front of you. That's written by Adam Wolf, our Director of Planning and Building. The memo provides information related to the planning and buildings department's response to complaints by neighbors at 310 Summit Drive, including relevant background and intended next steps. As you will recall, neighbors at 310 Summit Drive and others came out and spoke during open time on, on the March 21st, 2017 town council meeting and submitted a letter expressing concerns about the physical condition at the house at 310 Summit Drive and the need for action by town officials. This memo provides a background by our staff and it also provides actions that we are taking now and next steps. And with that, I'd like to ask, is Brian going to, who's, you going to do that, Adam? Okay. I'm going to ask Adam to give you a brief overview.
So you have the memo in front of you. This is really intended to be a report out of what we've done. I've listed some chronology here of our past actions and, and I think there'll be people to speak and comment on this. But, but if you have any questions about the chronology, I think what we've tried to do in general and our approach really is to address complaints as quickly and as efficiently as possible and follow up on them. One of the reasons, one of the things we did obviously recently in the last year was to hire code enforcement to do that even better. We're noticed, we have a lot of, lot of sort of code enforcement complaint-driven calls and that is something that we addressed, I think, and Todd addressed and helped us address in the last fiscal year. So I think we're, we're able, we have more capacity to do this even more efficiently in the future. But in any case, it sort of highlights the fact that when we did do a building inspection back at the end of 2015, there was, were some issues, in particular with a, with the deck up that was missing up at the house. And, and through the course of several, you know, year and year-plus now, 18 months, been working with Mr. Clifford, who has been cooperative and is trying to work with staff. In our estimation, it's been slow progress to very slow progress, but nonetheless, he has taken upon himself to, to try to understand the issues and work with staff to address the violations on the property. And frankly, it's, it's not, we've seen nuisance cases before, it's not where we get complaints. My early estimation was it didn't really, we've seen some that were actually much more impactful to surrounding neighborhoods from a public safety perspective and from a personal safety perspective. But nonetheless, I think we, our intention has always been to follow up, see this through and get the issue resolved. So one of the, the deck was our main priority, so that was an obvious safety, safety concern from the get-go. And at the same time, we worked with Mr. Clifford to inform him, try to advise him of the things to do to sort of address his neighbor's complaints. There's been limited progress on some of those things, although I think the, some of the intent is there, but still limited progress. And the deck permit finally was issued, I think, in November of 2016. And work really began in the spring and it's been slow-going. There's some pictures in the report that show that it's, it's basically, Mr. Clifford is here this evening, can speak to it, but you know, he's doing the work himself, which is obviously you're able to do the work yourself, but it's, it's, it's not, I would say, in our expertise, it's not easy work that needs to be done, but he's doing it. And we're at the point now where, which we, we get, we're at the spot where we encourage movement, we get some movement, but is it fast enough? Are we getting the progress we need? And are we getting, going to get resolution on not only the deck, but ultimately there may be some other issues that need resolved as well? So the next steps, and you know, again, working with Mr. Clifford are to sort of, we've been working with them to, you know, we meet with Mr. Clifford regularly down at the offices through the permit stage in terms of advising on construction work, but also in, in terms of reviewing the progress up at the site. And so in the coming weeks, we'll continue to do that, but at certain time, you know, it's, it becomes a question of whether or not we move to the next step of deciding that this is, in fact, needs to be elevated through the code enforcement process to either, we either have administration, administrative citations or the public nuisance routes. The nuisance route obviously ultimately comes before this body. And we have to, ultimately, we're trying to achieve compliance. It's not, we're not trying to, you know, we're, I think the goal is to get compliance and find out what's going to resolve these issues most efficiently and effectively. And I think we're at the point, given that the building permit, permit expired, you know, basically is a six-month permit expires, that was very recently that, that permit expired, we did have an inspection, so some, some progress is going, but we're at the point where we have to, we'll, we'll be thinking about what, what next. And, and that's Brian and our code enforcement officer will be advising on that for sure. So I'm happy to answer questions on that. I think the other piece of this is in reviewing the history of the house, there are some concerns we have about the, the structure and would like to get an inspection of the interior as well. We think that's more of a separate issue that relates more to a public safety, the role that we have as a building department from a public safety perspective. And so we'll be working on getting that arranged as well and following up on any, any code issues that may be discovered in that process.
Okay. Questions over here? Am I right? I have a question. What are the ramifications of not having a current permit? And where do we go from here regarding just the permit itself?
You talk about permit for the house?
Permit for the house.
Well, you know, I think that's a good question. You're looking, you just look at the facts and you have something that was basically started in 1973 and has been occupied at times over many, many years. I will say, it's not the only house that we've ever seen that doesn't have sort of the certificates at the, you know, the final sign-offs on building permits. We see major remodels that, for whatever reason, they, there's no call for inspection on the final and getting the finals. And, and we're working, that's another, you know, that's something we're working on and trying to address as we discover certain issues with, related to that. But I, you know, I don't, it's not something we've, we've dug into to the point where we have sort of a, sort of a legal opinion about what the ramifications might be there. But I can say it's been a condition for more than 40, you know, it's been a house that's been occupied many, many years. So it's not, you know, to say that that is the most immediate pressing concern, I think, is, is tough to, given the, given the time that's just lapsed. Of course, it is something we're going to address, but I don't know if I can give you a better answer than that at this point, but happy to follow up and try to answer that with more detail.
Did you have anything to add, Todd? Is there no other questions? I do believe there are members of the public.
Yes.
Who would like to speak to this. And thank you all for your patience. I know the staff presentations kind of took a long time, but, so I appreciate you being patient with us. So feel free to step up to the podium, state your name and where you live. We'll set a timer for three minutes. We have the, the timer will be displayed up on the screen so you can track how much time you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Mahaly. I live at 327 Summit, a couple houses up from 310 Summit. I spoke to you a couple of months ago in April when we first brought this issue up. And I want to thank you for taking this seriously and helping us to resolve a problem that's been a problem now for at least a couple decades. The only thing I wanted to add to Adam's presentation was just that, you know, the city did send the first complaint letter to Mr. Clifford and his wife, Ann, who's a joint owner of the property, I believe, in 1999, stating that the property does have an adverse effect on the surrounding properties, which is, you know, one of the triggers in your nuisance ordinance for property being a nuisance. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was that the property is essentially non-occupied. I've only lived here for five and a half years, but Mr. Maslin here has lived here for 20 years and he says the property's been occupied for maybe four months out of those 20 years. I'm sorry, Dan, could you, could you hold on, please?
No comments from the audience, please. This is his turn to talk. Thank you.
This is what we're dealing with. I've got no problem with Dan. I don't know Dan. He's, he's an absentee owner. He's not part of the neighborhood. All we're asking is he fixes his property so it stops adversely affecting ours. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
I'm the bad guy, Dan Clifford, 310 Summit Drive.
Well, we, we'll try not to call you bad guy.
Well, you can call me whatever you want. People have lived in that house since 1979 on. There's a short trail that I want some resolutions. It's been an ongoing problem since I've owned it. In 1979, the PG&E came up and lowered their pipe. They had a man hand dig it and lowered their pipe. The sewer system coming down the trail has broken three times. My children were that big and say, Dad, are you going to do something that stinks? Now they're 40 years old, 50 almost. So it's been going on that long and I'm trying to address it and everybody just says, oh, it's no problem, it's no problem. It's the way pipes are up on the hill. That's what I get. And then it, it's so personal now. I stopped my neighbor down at a little shed and said hi. And I was told that what they'd like to see me do is sell it and get off the hill. That's almost word for word. That's a personal. It's not got anything to do with the shingles, a little deteriorating on the house. It has nothing to do, it's a personal thing against me. And as we go back, I kept thinking, when Mr. Maslin was building his structure, I don't know what year that was, I wrote a nice letter, even though I don't particularly like the way he comes about, he's a wonderful letter writer and I can't compete with that. He does that for a living. I did construction for a living. I did construction for a living. I built many, many things, large, small, well-known architects' homes, so I know my business a little bit. When I read, I, I, I wasn't going to even come up and speak here, because I, I'm, I'm trying to absorb some of the things. What Mr. Mahaly said is, I don't really know the man, and he, we don't know each other. I slapped his car once, I was so PO'd, because they reneged at what they said they were going to do. They said they were not going to bring it to the Building Department, and they did. Anyway, I hope the people that come down the hill smile at me when I'm working, not just drive their car and not look. That's all I mean. But that trail, short trail, was changed to Howard Trail, and nobody, you send somebody to look at, at the trail, and they don't even know the name of it. Howard was, was a drunk that lived down the hill. The man before Mr. Mossen owned it, there's been several people, was a junkie.
You know, let's keep the, the personal insults-
No, the man is gone. He was a junkie.
Well, no, let, let's not insult anybody's reputation, please.
I'm not trying to insult people, I'm just saying what, what, what it was.
Okay. You mind wrapping it up, please?
My ten minutes are up or whatever.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
My name is Shar Mossen. I live next door to Dan. And I've lived there over 20 years. And I think there was a short amount of time, I want to say, maybe a couple months, where maybe the house was occupied by, I believe, his daughter at one time. And that was it. I rarely have seen my neighbor. Matter of fact, to me, he is not a neighbor. He's never been a neighbor to anybody on our block. He doesn't know who we are. And that house has been derelict ever since we moved in, in 94. And all I can say is, you know, if it were in Tiburon or Ross, I can't imagine that this house could have gone on the way it has. Or, you know, how could it even be occupied? How could anybody live in it if it doesn't have an occupancy permit? I mean, I, I'm, I'm not an expert on this, but that's just common sense. I can't, I know what the outside looks like. I can't imagine what the inside looks like.
Beautiful.
I imagine when we have one little rodent in our house, what that smells like and what it, what it does. I can't even imagine a house that's been unoccupied for over 30 years, you know? And frankly, I, you know, I was the person that Dan talked to the other day, coming up. He waved, waved me down on the street, and he does that to every neighbor that goes by, you know? And he, I rolled down the window, and he said, "Were you one of those people that complained?" You know? And so, he doesn't even know, he still doesn't know that I'm his next-door neighbor. And I'm just, you know, it's hurting all of our properties. You know, we just want the house to be fixed up, you know? Clearly, he lives somewhere else in the city, you know? He has other means of, of living. It's not his sole property. And so, to me, it just really needs to be addressed, and needs to be, it's just time. It's really time. And we don't like, you know, we all get along up on that hill. We love the hill. It, it hurts us too, that somebody like this has been just so hard to get along with. And, you know, we don't want to hurt him in any way, you know? But just want the issue to be resolved in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'll keep this very brief. My name is Eileen Monroe. I live at 327 Summit. I have lived at 327 Summit since January of 2012. I have never witnessed anyone occupying 310 Summit. It's always been an abandoned property. If I've seen anyone there, it was Mr. Clifford for maybe a couple hours, maybe a weekend or two a month. That property is not maintained, and I hear it may have structural problems, and we live in a high-fire danger zone. So, I would feel more comfortable if it was up to code.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hi. Werner Mossen, the neighbor next door at 312. Not much to say. I think pretty much has been said. I don't want to reiterate much. I want to thank you for the serious look you've had at, and the attention you've given it since we came in here, and I think it was March 21st, something like that. So, I appreciate that very much, and I just sense that you get it, and we now think it's, there's some urgency to it. It's been going on too long. So, we look forward to you as the town working on it hard. We will continue to monitor it as well. And just thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right. Seeing none, bring it back to you, Todd.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, this is not an actionable item. This is an update. As Adam spoke to, we are going to continue a strict review with code enforcement to continue moving through the steps per our code. And ultimately, we're going to come to a point here in the near future of can we complete the project? And if we can't, then we're going to have to consider the nuisance proceedings. And so, we will keep the neighbors updated. We'll continue to work with the owner at 310 Summit to assist him in any way we can. And ultimately, we may end up back at council in the near future. Regardless, we will give you an update, I will give you an update as we go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming out. Appreciate, appreciate it. All right. Moving on, Todd, you going to talk about shared fire services?
Luckily, this is a unique, this is a unique meeting where everything's at the front of the council meeting.
I like it.
Yeah, it's almost 9:30, and we still haven't gotten to council member reports, but go for it.
Let's skip them.
Okay. I will not, I don't need, I don't, do not need to give an update on OPEB, because I think George Warman did a good job of what we're doing with OPEB and this council, and they should be, the council should be congratulated for those efforts. I do want to give a brief update on the Ad-Hoc Committee for Fire Services, and please, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Bailey, jump in here with the update. So, as you know, we've been working towards a potential consolidation of fire services. Cal-PERS has been one of the, not stumbling blocks, but areas that we have to work through to see if we're able to do the pension reform that we were hoping to do. And ultimately, for us, we would be reforming from 3 at 50 to 55, which is very important to the town. As we've worked with Cal-PERS, and we've really gotten into kind of a procedural process issue, and unfortunately, we're one of the first entities to go through this in the state of California for Cal-PERS. And so, Cal-PERS is trying to assist us, and really, as, as background, in 2013, when the pension reform law was passed, moving forward, so luckily, Central Marin Police Authority was formed prior to 2013, or else that would have been in the same boat. Moving forward, all new organizations formed, JPAs, all new employees would be under that Reform Act. Since then, Cal-PERS has really analyzed that legislation and said, "That's not really the intent." Reform isn't, is the intent, but they allow agencies now that form the new organization, you can continue with your current Cal-PERS contract. So, in our case, it would be 3% at 50. In Larkspur's case, it's 3% at 55. So, as we began to work with them and share what our issues are, over the last two to three months, they have really, we've, we have the right people in the room, we're problem-solving it. We have an application to submit to them for the review. It could take up to six months for that review, to allow us, and ultimately, give us a decision to approve what we're trying to do. But unfortunately, when you read the application, it has questions like, "What is the name of your JPA? When was it formed? What is the governing body?" We haven't formed that yet, because it's contingent on them allowing us to do what we want to do. So, we took a step back recently before the Ad-Hoc Committee meeting, and we got with our, our legal expert that has been helping us, Tom Bertrand, our legal counsel on the JPA, as well as our labor expert, Glenn Burkeimer, and we started a problem solve to say, "How can we help Cal-PERS, you know, help us through this process?" And we started to analyze the idea of forming the JPA in advance. So, we'd actually formed the JPA in advance, we put everything in place, we would continue to keep our employees, and Corder Madera would be employees of Corder Madera, we do not lose control of them, we keep that, Larkspur would keep their employees, but we would share our employees under the umbrella of the JPA. So, we formed the mechanism of the JPA, but the employees still stay with the city and town. By doing this, it solves a couple things for us. Number one, we can start this three-to-six-month process with Cal-PERS. Number two, it'll, it solves another problem that we talked about early on in these talks. You can only share services for so long before you start to get in trouble. You get in trouble with the labor groups, and you get in trouble with human resources types of issues, because you have Larkspur and Corder Madera employees supervising the other side, and you get in problems there. An example would be if our highest-ranking official on our side is a battalion chief, so if he got in trouble, technically, the fire chief, who's a Larkspur fire chief, can't, can't investigate it, can't do discipline on that employee, that's a Corder Madera employee. I would have to do it as the town manager. So, again, we're coming on a one-year mark, there's some issues. By forming the JPA, it actually solves the human resources problem, because it puts the mechanism in place, and we can put some language in the JPA that'll allow us to continue to move as smoothly as possible on all fronts operationally. And it allows us, again, to continue this process with Cal-PERS. Cal-PERS normally wouldn't like you to do something like this of, like I said, on the human resources side, of just forming something and, and going the specific route, but in our situation, we believe that Cal-PERS would appreciate that effort on our side to help them do the process, to assist us ultimately with the JPA, and allowing us to do what we want to do with our, with our pension reform. So, the question is, and I ask this specifically to our labor attorney and our legal attorney, was, what is the worst-case scenario that can happen to us? What liability risk are we taking as a, as a town by forming the JPA in advance and submitting the application? The answer's nothing. We're in the same boat if we're successful or not successful with Cal-PERS. We're in the same situation that we are today. The reason being is we control our employees, they're town employees. All we're asking to do is basically allow a mechanism to go through the Cal-PERS process and form the JPA in advance. And so, there's a lot to it. We had a lot of discussion with the, the Ad-Hoc Committee. Ultimately, it's the recommendation of the Fire Ad-Hoc Committee, the four council members that we proceed to evaluate and move forward with the formation of the JPA. Ultimately, that would come back to the respective councils of Corder Madera and Larkspur for review and approval. And it is the, it is the recommendation of both our labor expert and our legal expert with, as it relates to our JPA, that they recommend as well this process. And I know it's, it's a little bit different than what we're, we've talked about necessarily in the past, a process, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. But again, we are going to move forward and contact Cal-PERS to make, basically, make sure that we're all on the same page and start that application process. By submitting the application process, it does not lock us into anything, any decision-making. It allows us to ultimately get an answer of what we're trying to do. The, the other, and this is where we're at. So, if we choose to do this, ultimately, we could submit this application by the end of July, and then again, it starts a three-to-six-month evaluation. If we choose not to do this, I'm here to tell you that we're probably not going to get an answer, we're not, we're just going to be stuck where we are today for probably another half a year. They do not know what to do with us, and, and they're trying, and it's, it's, it's kind of a scary place to be. So, unfortunately, sometimes we're at the front of the, the tip of the spear in some change, and I think it's positive change, and they're trying to help us. This would help them move forward with the process. And they've insinuated this at the start. They asked, "Is there any way that you could form the JPA in advance?" And our answer initially was no. But as we started to sit back and talk about it, and talk about the pros and cons, and any risk at all, we, we feel like we can answer and speak to that in the transition MOU. That would be the labor group's MOU, and what we'll do is, we'll mirror both MOUs for Corder Madera and Larkspur, and we'll move forward as is, so everyone's the same except for the retirement. And then when we get the answer, we can move forward with the new JPA and move the employees on to the JPA, under the JPA umbrella. One other option for us, as we go through this ultimately, is that if we can't reform the 3% at 50, at the end of the day, but we can still form the JPA and move forward, and we agree consolidation is best, other entities have done this in the past, an option is for our current classic town employees to stay town employees, and for classic town, city employees to stay city employees until they come off the books over the next 10 to 20 years. That is an option. It's not one that we're going to recommend. We think this is the best option to move forward, and I'm sorry for a couple of you, this is the first time you've actually heard this. Again, we just started really problem-solving this yesterday. But we think this is the best way to move forward, and on top of it, and as it becomes necessary, if you form a JPA, you're going to need a name. The labor group, this is really interesting. So, out of all the things that come with a consolidation, the fire labor group, out of everything that we're talking about, and keep in mind, even 3% at 50, going to 55 and reforming, the most important thing for our labor group, as that we agendized it last night for the Ad-Hoc Committee, and they actually voted on it, and the, and the, the fire labor group voted 100% consensus, and I've never heard that before, to, to be Central Marin Fire Department, not authority, but, but department. And Scott could jump in there more if you, if you would like any, how that came about, but that's what they want to be called. It's important to them for many reasons, but one, it's identity, it's something that they're really proud of, and something else that, that I think is helpful for them, and I think I want the council and the community to know, is they've really given this a lot of thought, and so, on the fire trucks, and it would have Central Marin Fire, but you would also have on the fire trucks, the Corder Madera Fire. You'd have the Corder Madera emblem insignia that we have, you'd have the Greenbray insignia, and the Larkspur insignia on those cars, as a sense of identity, because we have uniqueness in both Corder Madera, Larkspur, and Greenbray. And so, I just think it's, it's really a thoughtfulness to what they did, I was really inspired in, in what they talked about last night. And again, the Ad-Hoc Committee heard that, I think they took it to heart too, and they unanimously approved that and recommend that name as well for consideration. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yes?
I have a question. If, for example, the JPA is ratified, it's accepted, it's in place, and as time goes on, there's talk about eliminating the firehouse on Magnolia, and perhaps building another one elsewhere, or just using the one over by Bon Air. Say if they decide they want to build another one somewhere else in Larkspur. What kind of money is going to be expected from Corder Madera to kick in for that? And also, is it, is there still built in that, the way, when you talked about Central Marin Police, that we could unwind from the, from the JPA, from the consolidation, if it turned out that it wasn't to Corder Madera's benefit?
Sure. Good questions. And in summary, I'll say this, and this is what the Ad-Hoc Committee's working on, and really, I think, already from the conversations of the bullet points that we've been working on, the talking points, the answer is we can undo everything, and, and I think it's because of the way we're approaching this JPA. It's a little bit different than Central Marin Police Authority, but it adds more protection for both the city and the town on various issues like you're talking about. All facilities are going to be retained by the city and town. Prior liabilities are going to stay with the city and town. We're moving forward. And so, that's important, because when you get into a situation, if there's a disagreement, one, keep in mind, you can't do anything, Corder Madera, Larkspur, without that fire board agreeing a majority vote. So, to your example, nothing could even be considered unless there was one town representative on that board that would consider something like that. So, no town or city can dictate with this. The other thing is, we're not going in day one with obligations, you know? And so, we have opportunity that we necessarily didn't have with Central Marin, to do things the right way, and, and with our decision-making moving forward. Facilities are going to be a conversation, I'll tell you that, and we talked about it yesterday, the, the Larkspur City Manager spoke specifically, there is no intent to close any stations. And when you look at our operational model of how we're set up now and how we're preparing to set up, Station 14, the Tampa Pius Station right next door, is really our, our, our main station. to set up, Station 14, the Tampa Pius Station right next door, is really our main station. It's our headquarters station. And Station 13, our east side station, is a critical station, as we've talked about many times. There is no intent under any terms to change that model. And so, in your example of future facility conversations of maybe even following the model of Central Marin Police Authority specifically, it'll be a different, it'll be the same conversation for Central Marin, but it'll be opposite. It'll be in town limits, and Larkspur will be talking about potentially giving money for a property or funding to support such a facility. That is the intent, I've been really specific with the city manager about that moving forward. And so, I am comfortable moving forward, and I think the ad hoc committee will be too when they review that. Ultimately, everything we're talking about will be reviewed by the ad hoc committee first with recommendations, and then ultimately, the town council for approval. So there'll be no surprises. And I'm very confident that we are protected as a town. We can undo this if we had to. My point, and I just really want to emphasize to this council, we've talked about potentially not, people have thrown out, well, we're not necessarily going to save money like we did Central Marin Police Authority. It's going to cost more because you're filling positions, and you're going to start to see it in this budget right here. We are going to save a half a million dollars annually, and that's a fact, and it's not because we lessened our service or personnel. And when you look at the model of Central Marin and you look back 10 years and we paid the same amount, we are positioned just like Central Marin was for Corder, like how Corder Medera enjoyed those savings. We are in a really good spot. My concern, Vice Mayor Condon, is that if we had to undo this, what that would look like for the town? Because I tell you that we saved $500,000, but I'm comparing it to a number of the prior fiscal year. That number, as an example, would be about $800,000 to $900,000 more if we had a fully-staffed chief, three battalion chiefs, and the way we were going. Our numbers were going to go up, $400,000, not down 500. And so, it's a huge swing that I haven't really pointed out because I haven't focused on the financial part. But my greatest concern as we ask questions and share concerns, my concern is the what if we had to undo this? I don't know how we would at this point. I mean, I think the operation has been such a success. I think the positive comments from the community have been such a success, and the thoughtfulness of our chief, I've just been so impressed with it. I feel we are positioned very strongly across the board to protect the town in our best interest moving forward. I hope that answers your question. But I also am very sensitive to, we have to show it, and we're going to have to go through the process, and that's what we're doing. So just forming the JPA doesn't mean that we just fast-tracked and forget about all this other stuff. Our ad hoc committee meetings are going to continue, and we're going to continue to walk our community through this process. And we had a member of the community, one of our retired town managers, Jim Robinson, came in yesterday, and he spoke to operations. He had some good operational questions, and we're going to come back and remind everyone of why operationally what we're doing is better. And so, I'm very excited about this.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, that discussion about operations and why things are going to be even better is going to happen at the next ad hoc committee meeting for the Fire Consolidation Ad Hoc Team. And we are now video recording those meetings, so the link to the video recording will be on the website. Under Fire Department, there's a subheading for the consolidation, or shared services, I think it's called.
Shared services, yeah.
Todd, one thing that came up at the ad hoc meeting that I wanted you to share with everybody, if you wouldn't mind, is the fact that the JPA will have a particular name, probably Central Marin Fire Agency or Authority or whatever. And then somewhere in the JPA document will be some wording that specifies that the actual department is called Central Marin Fire Department. Do you mind clarifying that, just so nobody's caught unaware?
It's a good question. It's a JPA, it's a Joint Powers Authority, and so normally, when you form a JPA like that, just like Central Marin Police Authority, you would be Central Marin Fire Authority. The Fire Department has a long tradition, and they spoke, it's really important to them, and they spoke specifically to it yesterday, I can't do it justice, but there is language within the JPA. Ross Valley Fire Department actually did this, so they're an authority, but they call themselves, I believe, a department. And so you put specific language in there and you spell it out. So yeah, we're a JPA, but there's specific language that we're going to call ourselves a department. And that's important because when you get into the legal aspects of things and are filing with the secretary's office at the state level, there's certain protocols. In a police authority or a police department, it's important that you keep the name and you don't go this route and call it a department. I'm just going to share with you because on the police side, there's a lot more civil litigation. And so, our attorney wouldn't allow us to be a department, for instance. On this side, it's a much lower risk. Tom Burge friends reviewed it, and ultimately, our town attorney is going to have to review this as well, but they can put language in there that will allow us, even though we're a JPA, we can call ourselves a department. And so, it's just a paragraph description, we've already vetted that. It's just funny what's really, it's not funny, what is, you never can evaluate what's important to someone, either the council, the community staff, or labor group, and this is the number one issue. They want to be a department, and they want to be called Central Marin Fire. And so, I can only share it, and I support it because it's important to them. So, I hope that clarifies that.
That's good, good. Any other questions over here? No? Great, thank you very much.
I think that's it.
Any other items for your report?
But I'll stop, I'll send emails.
Okay, got it, all right. Council reports. Why don't we start down here? Bob?
Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, we met last week. We received and approved the audit from 2015, 2016. We approved the budget for 2017, 2018. We slightly increased ambulance fees in three of the jurisdictions. And we received an EMS award from the American Heart Association, and the lady presenting it said, apparently Marin County is a very good place to have a heart attack. Thank you.
Well, okay then. Slum, I'm sorry. Jim, no? Slum.
Sure. So I attended the Marin Clean Energy Monthly Meeting. The, I'm the representative for our town on that board. The energy authority continues to grow, it's financially healthy. Contra Acosta County and its member cities apparently look like they're about to join. It's just incredible how much bigger and, but every time new members join, we all, like it reduces our rates, you know, incrementally, so it's nothing but good in that regard. I attended on behalf of the town, the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee. At our most recent meeting last Monday, Assembly Member Mark Levine appeared, and he told us that he encouraged us to encourage our people. If anybody has any issues, feel free to reach out to him and his office directly if there's some government-related anything that he can be of help to. He really hands-on, like, please let me know if I can help with anything. So if anybody would like his contact information, I will be happy to provide it. I attended, as Todd's already fully reported on, with Diane, the Shared Fire Services Ad Hoc Committee meeting. Thank you all, that's all.
Thank you. Carla?
Okay, a couple things. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting today, and their golf tournament that everybody's welcome to participate in is going to be October 12th at Stone Tree. So anyways, put that on your calendar, and it should be a fun event there, exploring a whole lot of activities that I think will be fun for everybody that participates. Also, the chamber had asked if I would relay this to the council, and that is that they are really concerned that there are letters being written to, whether it's Nextdoor or the IJ or any type of social media, that oftentimes have misinformation, and people are grabbing onto it, and it's just snowballing. And that it affects a lot of projects, and in particular, any progress made with Best Western and Restoration Hardware. And that although they see that the agenda for the council meetings is always on Nextdoor, they had asked if Todd could perhaps do a weekly newsletter just to go on Nextdoor about projects that are important in the town that people don't even know about or don't have the complete information on, rather than depending on the word of somebody angry writing into the IJ or to Twin Cities Times or what have you. And Todd so graciously said he would. And so anyway, I think that that will help to really get some clarification out there. Also, the, one of the concerns too, was the Fourth of July Parade that Julie Kritzberger, director's working really hard for, and that that comes from, or is financed by the transient occupancy tax, and how important the hotels in town are for that sort of event. Going on to Age Friendly, Mario is gone, but the Senior Fair was held a couple of weeks ago, and I wasn't in town, but understand that it was a tremendous success. Every year, it gets better. Age Friendly did, played a large role in getting the word out and had a table set up. They had a great big prize from Trader Joe's. Last year, 30 some odd signed up to win the prize. This year, 81 people signed up to get the prize. So there's been a lot of interest, 30 vendors participated. And then Wednesday, the 21st, to remind everybody, it is the third Wednesday Speaker Series, June 21st, over at Central Marin Police Community Room, and the topic is travel tips. And it's open to anyone sponsored by the Rec Department, Age Friendly, and the Twin Cities Village.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you. Good luck with that newsletter weekly, Todd. Might I recommend that you?
Monthly, or nightly?
Yeah, that you consider doing it periodically as updates warrant and not commit yourself to weekly, because I have a feeling that's going to be a...
Good suggestion.
Yeah. I also want to point out that some other cities have hired a public information officer to handle things like that. We don't have one, so we do the best we can, but anyway, good luck with that, Todd.
We have that new position coming on. What is the new position called?
That would be a customer service.
Yeah, it's not a PIO.
Right, but hopefully it will help Todd and Rebecca.
Maybe help, yes. All right, I have a few things to share. First of all, I mentioned this briefly earlier when I was discussing Department of Public Works. There is a new organization in the Bay Area called Resilient by Design. It is essentially a design competition to address sea level rise and climate change and other resiliency issues in the Bay Area. They are calling for two things. Number one, design teams to tackle some kind of a climate change, sea level rise, some other kind of resilience issue, and also for sites that might be offered up as potential candidates for one of these so-called design solutions. So obviously, we're not going to be putting together a design team, however, we do have sites, including Bay Waterfront. So Kelly was at that meeting with me, and I think we're going to hopefully get, arrange a time to meet. We need to get that, well, they're due to Resilient by Design by July 14. However, the county is working on putting together a cohesive list. We're trying to work cooperatively. Chris Chu at County Planning Department wants a list by next Tuesday, I believe. Kelly should have the date. I did get an email, Kelly probably got the email also with a little bit more information. So, let's schedule a meeting. I also attended Transportation Authority of Marin. Construction on the third lane of the Richmond Bridge heading eastbound is, it's under construction, and it is due to open this November. The bike path on the upper deck is not part of that, that's going to take a little bit longer, but we should have a third lane in the afternoons, starting in November, which is kind of exciting. Wanted to mention that memorandum of understanding has been signed, which officially combines A-BAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, and MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, staff, all under MTC. The full agency merger is likely to follow, but for now, at least the staff is combined under MTC. Regional Measure Three, which is the proposed increase in bridge tolls with the funds going to transportation projects around the Bay Area, that has passed the state senate. It requires state legislation, and then it would go to the voters of the nine counties around the Bay Area. So it has passed the state senate, it now goes on to the assembly. The assembly is likely to hash out the language, list of projects or priorities. If that passes and the governor signs, then it would, I think, be taken over by MTC or the Bay Area Toll Authority to manage the initiative process, so the voters can have their say. I don't know what the timeframe is on that. I wanted to give you the heads up that it looks like this summer, the carpool lane southbound, in the morning, the hours will be extended from 6:30 to 8:30, to 6:30 to 10. This is kind of a pilot project. It's all very complicated, but one of the really crucial things to understand is that sometimes when transit starts way up in Sonoma County, by the time it reaches San Francisco, the carpool hours have essentially expired. So they're really trying to kind of do their best to maximize the efficiency of the carpool The northbound hours are likely to be extended as well, but that will not be happening probably until next winter, after the New Year. Wanted to mention that Marin County Department of Public Works is converting to 100% renewable diesel. Don't know if you knew that. Some other jurisdictions already have. Wanted to mention, I don't know if it'd be worth us considering, but essentially, it uses fats, oils, and grease to, a company uses that to create diesel. It burns cleaner and costs the same as regular diesel. All San Francisco and Oakland Public Works vehicles have been converted, and evidently, since it burns cleaner, there's less maintenance on the machines because there's less, I guess, wear and tear on the engines. And then finally, Mr. Heims, I wanted to mention again that we will be scheduling on an upcoming agenda, deciding climate mayors, and I wanted to give a special, joining climate mayors. Wanted to give a shout out to Rebecca for bringing that to my attention, suggesting we do agendize that, so thank you. All right, it is 10 o'clock. What do you say we take a five-minute break, and then we'll move on to the consent calendar? All right? Okay, thank you all. See you back in five minutes?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Any member of the town council, staff, or the public may request removal of an item for discussion. Is there anybody here who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion? See none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve items five, Roman number one through five, Roman numeral six.
Second? Oh, sorry, Jim. That was Jim.
Fpping over each other to get this one done.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first. Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to number six, public hearings. 6.1, we have a sanitary district item. It's a consideration, possible action to approve proposed resolution... It's a consideration and possible action to approve proposed resolution, to approve proposed resolution number 03/2017, establishing the sanitary district appropriation limit for the next fiscal year. George Warman.
Yes, Madam President, and members of the board, this is the annual ministerial action where we're required to set an appropriation limit each year. In the case of the sanitary district, the reason why we have to do it with the sanitary district is it receives the Proposition 13 allocation of property taxes. If it did not receive property taxes, it wouldn't require an appropriation limit.
George, can I interrupt you for one minute?
Yes.
Did you want to correct something procedurally? Do we need to convene sanitary district or something, or no?
Well, it's a component unit of the town, so as long as we vote on it separately, we don't need to adjourn and reconvene, correct? Yeah.
I'm sorry, George, please continue.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
No, I, the, the-
No, not for me.
Do you have any question? I mean, this is a standard. Are there any changes to this, George, from the previous?
Folks, we do this every single year, and this is required under, is it the GAN? The GAN Amendment.
Yes, the appropriation limit for 1718 would be $10,510,212. That is substantially above the actual proceeds of taxes, and the result is that the GAN limit doesn't have any effect on the district in 201718. So if there aren't any questions, the recommendation would be to adopt Resolution Number 03/217, setting the appropriation limit for fiscal year 201718 at the amount of $10,510,212.
Thank you, and just for the benefit of the viewers out there, I want to ensure that everybody recognizes this is just an appropriation limit. It doesn't mean we're actually going to be spending that much, so it's just a not to exceed. All right, any questions? Any member of the public like to speak to this? See none? Let's bring it back.
To approve proposed resolution number three/2017, establishing the sanitary district appropriation limit for 2017, 2018.
Second?
Thank you.
Board Member Andrews.
Yes.
Board Member Bailey.
Yes.
Board Member Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice President Condon.
Yes.
President first.
Yes, thank you. Agenda item 6.2, now this is back to the town. It's consideration and possible action to approve proposed resolution number 29/2017, establishing the town appropriation limit for the next fiscal year.
Madam Mayor, this is a similar action. In this case, the staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 29, 2017, that would establish the town appropriation limit for proceeds of taxes at $35,880,804. That is, that amount would be substantially above the actual estimated proceeds of taxes. So the, the actual proceeds of taxes is about $19,588,000 below the appropriation limit. So the effect is that the GAN limit doesn't have any impact on the town in fiscal year 201718. So again, the recommendation is to adopt Resolution 29, 2017, setting the appropriation limit for 1718 at $35,880,804.
Thank you. Any questions? Any member of the public like to speak to this? See none, bring it back. Do I hear a motion?
I move Resolution Number 29, 2017, a resolution establishing the fiscal year 2017, 2018 appropriation limit for the Court of Magere.
Second?
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George. Business items. Number 7.1, conduct workshop to review proposed capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Rebecca, could you put the staff report up with attachments? Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Try to get through this quickly. First, we're not asking you to take any action tonight, this is just an overview of the CIP. Action would be requested on the 20th, I believe. And then I've attached a copy. I just want to go through a couple points in my staff report before we look at the actual projects. I noted that it's an ambitious program. I mentioned that before. It's almost impossible to complete all these projects in any one fiscal year, but we like to put them up there and try our hardest. I just wanted to mention something about the budget numbers we put up here. I mean, I don't want to say they're best guess, but they're educated estimates. They could well change through the course of the project. Sometimes I don't even have a concept, or a particular concept for these projects, you know, or maybe I'll have three or four different concepts that could vary greatly in expense, in cost. So anyhow, we work with it, we work through it. I also wanted to mention that, you know, we had, we, through the last couple of years, we had accessibility category. I'm going to recommend we eliminate that. It's not that we are doing any accessible projects. I started that after the lawsuit that was filed against us, and we, we got a consent decree from the court that we had to spend X dollars over a certain amount of time. I thought that would be a good way to track it, but in effect, it's really not, because someone could look at that one category and say, "This is all we're spending," when that's not at all the case. For instance, this project out here on Tamil Pious Drive, Complete Streets Project, over 80% of that is accessibility, at least the cost of it is. So I didn't want any misconceptions with that. I think we're better off just try, we can easily track the accessible parts of any project. I did list, you know, we have different funding sources. A couple main ones are the storm drainage tax, which expires in 2022, I think. I just wanted to list, list what the requirements, those three, not requirements, but what the intent of that tax was for, and I listed those three intents. That's out of municipal code. And then, of course, there's, you know, just to use the rule of thumb, I typically use $25,000. Any, any project per se under $25,000, we wanted to charge, charge to the sale, to the storm drain tax. And then the same with the half-cent sales tax. I listed the bullets that were put out, or actually, that's from the resolution that is, that called for that tax, called for the election for that tax. That comes up time and again. And then finally, one other bullet point I wanted to mention, you know, we typically have a pavement rehab project, street overlay project, and a slurry seal project. I did list a number of streets in this list of projects, which is preliminary. You know, we have to make sure, see, you know, what, what that's going to cost, make sure it fits the budget, that kind of thing. But when, we, we'll come back to the council for approval plans and specs, and then we'll have the definitive list. It'll be close to what we have, but it could change. I just want, you know, that's preliminary. So the attachments are the draft CIP. The, I included a list of secured and potential funding and grants, and I just want to mention Nisha again. She's just wonderful in pursuing these grants. It's not an easy job at all, and she's great with it, and puts a lot of effort into that. And then the final attachment's a summary budget, listing the funding sources for the projects, which could change a little bit between now and two weeks from now when you see this. So if we go to Attachment One, Rebecca, and I'll just, we'll just flip page by page. I'm not going to go over every project on this. So just holler, you know, if I've missed something you want to talk about, or if there's something on here that, or something not on here that you want to talk about.
I have one, can I ask a question? Do you mind, or maybe I'll wait till you finish your thing, but-
That's all right.
It's probably the big file.
It should be the staff report with attachments.
Oh, it's actually that.
And just keep, or you can pull it off the website.
Well, they're trying to find that. I just wanted to add, so what's in front of you, some of the work that Daria has been working on to help with the whole capital improvements project plan. So as you saw last time in 1516, I believe Nisha authored it, and it's the Attachment One that has the list of all the projects, and that's what we're going to go over right now.
Okay.
No, that's with the staff report. Now, what you just had, Councilmember Andrews, and what I handed out, that basically translated from that document into our budget document. So that will now be our future budget document, and that'll list all the projects. So it's all translated from Dave's document onto our budget document. It shows you the funding sources. It'll show you the total estimate for the project, what we paid in prior years, what we want to pay for, what we're anticipating in fiscal year 1718, and then future years, so you get an idea. And then, something that you'll see as well, and I'll just pass it out as an example, it's our sales tax override. So sales tax override is a big one within our projects. There's probably $5 million plus in expenditures that we are going to recommend in this plan. What you'll see in the budget now that supports this is you'll see, for instance, the sales tax override, and on the first page, do you need another one?
I'm sorry, we only have three.
Oh, you should have.
Do we have?
And I think Jim has one of those.
Oh, Jim has one of these?
And so what you'll see that then, that'll mirror that, our capital improvements budget document, then you'll be able to look at the sales tax override, and what you'll see as an example, and like flood, the flood tax will follow the same format, Measure A and so forth. You'll see that what the taxpayer, what the community said we want it to be expended on, it matches our sales oversight committee document. You'll see a summary that it fits into those categories, and then on the back page, you'll see then all the projects, and you'll see it spelled out a little bit more. And so those are the types of document, documents we could put on our website. We can go to the sales tax oversight committee and talk to them and make sure that, you know, we're following the expectations of the community. And so I just wanted to point that out as you start to look at all the documents and compare it to the budget.
Go ahead. Are you good? Just wait a minute. Okay. If anyone wants to catch up, so we're going to start with the list of projects, Attachment One. So this, we can go straight past this. This was what we had, accessibility projects, to avoid confusion, recommending, eliminating that category altogether.
Dave, would you mind giving just a 10-second overview of where we are with the BRIF? The barrier removal and implement?
Well, yeah, where we're at is, we, starting in 201516, we need to spend 300, well, we need to spend $3 million over 10 years. That doesn't have to be $300,000 every year, that's cumulative. So we can spend nothing one year, $600,000 the next, or any combination of that, as long as over that 10-year period, we spend $10 million on access, or, I'm sorry, $3 million on accessibility. Either projects or accessibility parts of a project. Again, all the curb ramps out here, even though that's mainly for safety, pedestrian safety, you know, all the curb ramps are accessibility, and they're, they're the biggest part of it. I think I mentioned several months ago that a couple of those curb ramps are $50,000 each, just because you have to change all the drainage underneath it, you have to change all sorts of things to get that ramp compliant with the accessible regulations. So anyhow, the bottom line is we have to spend $3 million over a 10-year period, and we have to document that and turn it into certain people for review, and we've been doing that over the last two years.
It might be good to get an update, just a kind of a spreadsheet to the council-
Well, we can do that, we will do that.
Where we are.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
We'll do that. Again, we have to turn that in, and it does get scrutinized by certain attorneys. Okay. So moving on to environmental projects, this is a small category right now, it could grow. I mentioned Nisha before, I want to mention Kelly Crowe here, our other senior engineer. He, he handles this, and what I like about him in doing this, he's very passionate about it, passionate about it, and that's good, because it's, it's very worthwhile. These are very worthwhile projects. We'll get right into flood control. Just a couple projects I want to mention here, the two at the bottom of this page, Lagoon One Pump Station and Gate Structure Upgrade, and Lagoon Two. During the last, last budget period, which was two-year period, we had listed to replace all the pumps and gates at both of these pump stations. What we really need to do is a complete upgrade. Lagoon One Pump Station, I think it was, it was upgraded in 1987, I believe. It was just after I started here, and we didn't have enough money to upgrade it properly, so we have to pay some attention to this, and it, we may not even need all the pumps we have at that station, that kind of thing. So we're really going to look into these two. Instead of just going in and replacing what we have there with new equipment, we want to take an overall look at both of these stations. You know, again, I'm not going to go through every project. If you see something, just holler out. The next page?
I have a question.
I'm sorry?
I think it is on the next page, though. It's the one that Title Barrier doesn't have a project number. It's the single biggest project on the list. It appears on, it's right below Project 16-016.
You're on the next page?
Couple pages.
Two pages.
I'm sorry, can I just go page by page?
Yeah, of course.
Or I'll get lost a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah, so the next page, I didn't, I've gone through and highlighted what I wanted to address. The next page, I don't have anything highlighted. Again, they're relatively minor projects, you know, emergency drainage repairs, corrugated metal pipe replacement, we put those things in, they're, I don't want to call it a slush fund, but they're, they're just-in-case projects that would be done piece by piece. The next page, Rebecca?
That was where you, that was the page that you're asking.
Yeah, oh, okay.
What you just-
Did I miss it?
Yeah.
The Title Barrier along the way?
The Title Barrier.
Yeah, we'll look at that, I have it highlighted.
Great.
Yeah, the Title Barrier, all right. So this, this is the lowest point, you know, we've, we see constant flooding in the winter at the King Tides, High Tides, in that area of Golden Hind. So that's really the lowest point out in Mariner Cove, and several years ago, we did a townwide drainage study and identified the need for a levee in seven pump stations in Mariner Cove. The levee in, and of itself, at that time, was estimated to cost about $20 million. There is no way we're going to do that all at once. It'll be difficult to do this section of it, but I think we need to start. As far as funding for this goes, I mean, this is going to take several sources of funding. It's going to take general fund, it's going to take storm drain tax, it's going to take grants, and most likely, it's going to take assessment district. So just getting the funding for this is, it's out there, but we need to start and get it, get a really definitive design done on it, and that's the money I put in here in the immediate two years. And then the $4 million that's out there in the future is, well, I mentioned guessing before, and educated guessing, that's, that's a guess. You don't know where you'll be, you don't know what the regulatory agencies require, that kind of thing. So this is a tough one. I mean, it's going to be tough to do that, and one of the toughest parts of it will be getting through the regulatory process. I could, my, my vision of that would be a sheet-pile wall, certainly nothing with earthen that weighs too much, it would just sink, and, you know, sheet piles don't, and they're relatively easy to put in, provided you get through all the permitting. So anyhow, that's-
And forgive me, sheet pile, are those those big steel kind of?
They could be steel, they actually make plastic ones that do work.
And they're literally pounded into.
Yeah, they're driven into a certain depth, and they do well. And again, the main concern when you do a levee out in that area is the settlement that the weight of that levee would cause if you build a typical earthen levee. You know, in the past, we've talked about levees and title barriers out there. Some of the, one of the big issues, believe it or not, of, you know, the people who live along there is loss of view of the water. But eventually, you know, we're going to be closing that street. We close it now a couple times a year. I mean, we have these King Tides, usually November, December, January, and sometimes February, once a month for several days. And it's just getting worse, because the whole area is sinking. It's continuing to sink, to settle. So the land's going down. Yes, the water, I mean, heaven forbid, the water rises three meters. We're not even thinking about that right now. But we will meet about that. But really, what I'm addressing with this is still settlement. That's our biggest problem there, rather than the water getting higher. Though it's all relative, if the land goes down, the water's higher, even though there is no sea level rise.
Okay. Would you mind addressing the slotted drains?
Before we go on, can I talk about this one?
All right.
Sure.
Okay.
Because that's a different line item, or is that part of this line item?
It's different.
Okay.
It's different, but I think it's part of the big.
It's part of the, it's part of the big picture, yes.
Right, so let's get to Sloan's question, and then maybe Jim's.
Okay, I'm sorry, just a couple quick things. First one is, so now, as I recall from attending Flood Control Board, Flood Board meetings, there's a levee that's been degrading that is, and I want to understand if it's the same one as this, that is sort of like closer to the wetlands areas, is this the same one?
No, this is not. There is no levee there. The Mariner Cove was built as a high-level project. So there was no, it was filled, and at the time filled, they thought, to the point where it wouldn't flood.
Literally high.
Yeah.
And they used fill so that the neighborhood was up above sea level. But all that fill was very heavy.
And it settled.
And of course, they had dried out the marsh. It has sunk.
I've recorded almost six feet of settlement out on the very tip of Golden Hind, yes.
My understanding is.
Yes, documented.
Okay. I mean, I need to go a little deeper to understand this, but not tonight.
So there's no levee there, but we do have a line item for the levee you're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so then the second question I have about this line item, though, is that, I had understood it was about $350,000 just to get somebody to begin to diagnose the scope of the problem and a preliminary design. But there's $700,000 allocated for that. Is that because we just think it's more than we had thought, or?
Well, that's getting into the design and the regulatory process.
Okay, so.
The EIRs and all of that.
But that first $700,000 is intended to cover essentially, hopefully, a design and the environmental?
Yes.
Stuff?
Yes. I mean, you're definitely talking about a high level, what I'll call a high-level EIR. Adam here knows that, he wouldn't call it that, but.
And then the last, sorry.
An expensive EIR, how about that? We can all call it that.
No, I got it. And I'm sorry, guys, and the last question is, it's the first time I've heard that figure of, and I realize you're just spitballing it, David, maybe $20 million plus to fix this thing. Is that, I mean, is that a number you've begun to, in your own mind, think that's what we are going to have to be prepared to allocate at some point in the future to fix this thing?
Well, not, this is one section of that. That would be, that was an estimate for a levee around Mariner Cove. And without a tide gate across San Clemente Creek, that was a big issue back in the 1990s when we looked at this. So that, if you could put a tide gate across San Clemente Creek, that would eliminate a lot of length of levee. But that would be very difficult to get through regulatory process. Yes, yes. So instead of that, in the townwide drainage study, I had, it was AM West who did that. And we had them just look at a levee along, following San Clemente Creek. So you have that much more, you're doubling up on each side of San Clemente Creek, you're putting in a levee, rather than cutting across the creek and having what we called then an outbound levee, which would be right in fishing game property. So it's, that'd be.
David, will that design work provide an indication of the town of the urgency of the problem? In other words, it's not clear to me whether we need to be approaching this as though it's essentially an emergency, or whether it's something we need to prioritize eventually, or whether it, you know what I mean? It's hard to know, despite the huge cost, ought we to be throwing everything we at, can, at to solve this problem, or is it something that can wait? And you can't possibly, I'm not asking you to know, but will part of this money reveal the answer to that question to us? The urgency with which we need to do this work is what I'm wondering about.
I understand, yeah.
Because we're protecting like half the town.
It's a really good question. We're protecting a part of Mariner Cove, we're not protecting half the town.
Well, East Quarter.
I mean, yeah, I don't mean to dismiss that section of Mariner Cove. But you can go out there next winter, and you'll see that, especially the intersection of Ebtide and Golden Hind. I mean, it's close, and we have the homeowners calling and complaining that the wave action for, well, cars, they drive through it anyhow, even though it is closed. And the wave action from the cars are lapping up under their front porch and that kind of thing. It's pretty dramatic now, it's going to continue to settle, so it's going to get worse. And I don't know where that point is, where we have to say, we need to do this right now. It's flooding garages right now. The wave action is actually getting through, over the threshold of the front doors of houses, but not the actual level of the water. I mean, we're this close to the front door threshold. That's pretty close. And again, it's continuing to settle. You know, I've argued over the years with geotags, who said, oh, this is settled out. I mean, they said, when they built this, they said it would set a 30-year settlement, and it'd be finished settling. Well, you know, that was built in the mid-'60s, and it's still settling, believe me. So, yeah, I always wondered when we would get to that point. And I think we need to get close to that point. I mentioned assessment district, you know, a couple years ago, three, four years ago, I couldn't even have begun to go out there and convince people that we needed to form an assessment district to build this. It wouldn't have worked, it wouldn't have passed. But we're getting to that point, and I don't know quite where that is. It's a really good question.
Just from my own perspective, the forecasting of that kind of potential catastrophe, if it's 10 years away, if it's 20 years away, and if the cost of it is $5 million, or $20 million, or $100 million, that forecasting informs us with sufficient information to begin to determine whether, do we need to do a tax? Do we need to figure out some other way to begin to? But, you know, and I don't know how to get that information.
Well, we would have engineers provide that, or try to provide that. We would, as part of this.
Well, actually, if I might, we need a bigger picture look at this issue. And I think we need to get that from the Flood Control Board. And aren't they working on their recommendations for long-term flood?
They are, in fact, yeah, we have a meeting next week, and Kelly's going to staff that, and he's aware of this. They're aware of that. The Flood Board is aware of this, and it's getting worse each year. Last winter was the worst I've seen it in the X number of years I've worked here.
Diana, Flood Board did a.
No, but my question is, aren't they coming up with a big plan, or no?
We're not.
They're trying to figure out how to spread the limited funds to do the best they can.
Yeah, the Flood Board did a very detailed list.
The funds we have, right.
Okay.
But not a big plan to provide funds to do this $20 million. And that was, you know, that was 10 years ago, I guess, something like that, where that estimate was developed. So you can imagine it's increased since then.
And I've mentioned this to you, you know, recently, Todd. I think it's time, perhaps, to consider agendizing an item to maybe come up with an ad hoc committee to really look at this stuff and make some recommendations. And I think it should be Public Works, members of the Flood Board, and maybe two council members. Will you two put your heads together and consider whether or not it's time to start thinking about this?
I think it is time to start thinking about it, I do. Yeah, and that's good, I love that kind of help.
And Staff, Kelly, I think this would help inform maybe things like the Resilient by Design or other grant opportunities that might come up. My question has to do with slotted drains, I know Jim's next, but my question kind of, again, is about the whole big, big picture.
We'll get, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sloan, were you done?
Simple question, this Title Barrier?
Okay.
Is it going to be FEMA compliant, or just the best we can do with what we got?
It's the best we can do with what we got. It won't be, well, unless we want to spend more, way more than that $20 million, it won't be FEMA compliant. If we looked at the townwide drainage study, it specifies that it's not FEMA compliant. FEMA compliant is really, I mean, you'd have, people who live there want to be able to see out their back windows for a FEMA compliant flood wall. It'd be too high.
Any other questions about the Title Barrier? Okay.
Let me try to address the whole picture there. So, as I mentioned, I'm going to talk about Mariner Cove in general. So when it was built, and they got the fill from up on Endeavor Cove, or a lot of it, a couple things, it was built just barely higher than what they thought it had. Well, it was just barely higher than what our code at the time said you had to build it, a subdivision. They did that, but just barely, because the more fill you brought in, the higher you made it, the more cost, bottom line. And also, as part of that, it was built with minimum grades on all the gutters, all the streets, the longitudinal grade, okay? So as an engineer, you'd love to see 2% longitudinal slope on gutters. So they flow and they wash themselves, and a root, if it lifts the gutter a little bit, it doesn't stop the drainage along that gutter. Well, they used minimum amount of fill, minimum amount of slope. You can look at the plans, I mean, less than half a percent of slope, rather than 2% in a lot of cases. So what's happened? We've had, number one, differential settlement, and their differential settlement between 20 or 30 feet. You know, this can go down that much, and 20 feet away, it goes down this much. So all of a sudden, when you were sloping this way, now you're sloping backwards. That's what's happening there. That's not an easy fix, because, unless you come in and regrade the entire subdivision, not only the gutters, but the driveways and the yards and everything that ties into those gutters. So the slotted drains allow the, we don't need slope on the gutters. If we put a slotted drain where the bottom of that slotted drain does slope down to where we want it to go, that's why we need the slotted drains. They're to get rid of what we call curb ponding, because the gutter itself has lost the slope, the minimal slope it had. Now, curb ponding doesn't sound like too big a deal when you just think curb ponding, but we have curb ponding that comes six inches up to the top of the curb and goes across the sidewalk. We have that much ponding, and that becomes a safety hazard. You start covering that sidewalk with water. So in addition to building this levee, we need to get, we need to fix this curb ponding. It's more than a nuisance, it's a safety hazard, and that's why we have the slotted drains. Now, also, there's another component to the total fix out at Mariner Cove, and that's pump stations. And the townwide drainage study, it looked at every, surveyed everything out there. We need seven pump stations out there to make the whole thing work. We built one. And we need to build another one at Golden Hind and Ebtide. That would be the second pump station of those seven we need to do. So when you combine the levee and the slotted drains and the pump stations, the one we built was about $1 million, you're talking a lot of money. Therein lies, yes, let's get a committee up and figure out, you know, how we can try to fund this. We did it in the 1990s, we can look back at those files and see what started to work, what didn't really work at all, that kind of thing. But, yeah, as I mentioned, we're going to have to get many funding sources. This can't come out of a storm drain tax alone, it can't come out of a general fund alone, it can't come out of an assessment district alone. People wouldn't, I don't think they would go for it. So we need a combination of funding on this. And I don't know what that is yet, but, you know, having a subcommittee would be a great help.
And just, it goes back to everything that we're talking about. As our sales tax override comes up in April of 2020, our flood tax in 2022, I think it is, we are trying to put our financial systems in place to do that analysis, to know everything we need to know about our fiscal health, and then forecast out, and then come back around and evaluate all of our infrastructure and put dollar amounts to it. And then, I think, as we're talking about right now, the necessity or the urgency on any given thing. We know we want maintenance of our roads and our streets, but what's the urgency on the flood side? And how much is that? And so I think that's the priority, that as staff, that's what we're talking about. And there's an urgency amongst us, because we know we're up against the clock. You know, when that day comes of the sales tax override, it's going to be a different conversation when that comes up than it was last time. And it's going to be much more specific in what the need is, if there is a need. And I think we have funding source issues. Right now, we're going to get the operating budget in order, and I think we've done that. And we know that that can self-sustain over the next decade, that's important. And then it's, okay, then where are we? And what do we need to do? And there's multiple opportunities. And it's a daunting task, but I feel like this is the conversation that we've had over the last six months, of we are positioned, actually, to set our community on the right track over the next 40 years. We actually are in a place to do that, you know? And so that's why we got to take advantage of Dave and his team. And so we'll put together that committee. But I think it's much more than just the flood control, I think it's the whole enchilada. And I think as these taxes come up, we talk, we need to have a public conversation of, what are we going to do?
Agree. One quick question about this. Assume that the council, you know, approves this as part of the budget approval at our next meeting. Do you take that as being us approving each of these individual projects, and you're ready to take the money and get it done? Or will these projects still individually come back to council for individual approval?
Yeah, they will come back to council, anything that's over a certain amount, say $45,000. Something like that. There's, I'm not going to get too far into that specific amount. But yes, we come back, as I mentioned, with the street paving approval plans and specs, authorization to go out to bid. We owe, you know, on any major project, and again, major project being over that kind of, I'll just use $50,000 for around number right now. So yes, the answer is yes.
So for instance, the $350,000 for the Title Barrier?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
So Sloan, so it will come back to us before any money, any of those funds are actually committed to?
I don't have a problem with the spending of the money. I'm, you know, I believe, like, I don't want to go deep on the group here, but our primary mission ought to be to set this up for our children, our children's children, and so forth, and the way that those that came before us set it up for us, David, with the flood control system. And one of the dangers that we can all foresee happening is that the floods in the East Quarter of Deering, Mariner Cove, are going to get worse and worse, gradually, maybe very gradually, but for sure, that's going to happen. So since we know that right now, maybe it's a decade from now, maybe it's 50 years from now, we ought to right now, put in place whatever we can do to begin to mitigate it, and, you know what I mean?
And I want to ensure that that's big picture, not just saying, oh, let's do this little project. No, let's do this little project. So I think we're kind of saying the same thing in different ways.
I think you are. And this list of projects, especially Mariner Cove, the flood list, is, most of it's based on the townwide drainage study we did, that was vetted by the Flood Board completely. So that's where the. So, that's where this comes from, and a lot of the numbers on here come from that. And, you know, we're limited in the funds we have available. And Todd and I, with these projects, we have to juggle that to a good extent. But anyhow, yeah, I hope to do it. I mean, I mentioned, you know, the $6 million total CIP. It's very, it's going to be difficult to do that, but it's ambitious. And we hope to really attack this.
And it'll depend on what the Gelati brothers are.
There you go. It depends on how many bids we get, right? It does. It really does. But anyhow, we don't want to get into that right now. These are, these estimates are much more pulled out of the air. Well, these numbers you see here are much more, you know, pulled out of thin air than when we give, when we go out to bid and have an engineer's estimate. But anyhow, so if we stay on this page, Sloane, what did I want to say?
About the other, the levee?
The one above, the one, the title barrier we were talking about, Golden Hind Storm Drain Pump Station Slotted Drains. That's Eptide. That's that corner. That's the worst intersection for tidal flooding we have. That's what that one is. And again, it's more than $1 million because it includes all the slotted drains that we would do along with the pump station. And then, getting down, just a couple down, the Marina Village Pump Station is, or, I'm sorry, the Mariner Cove Marina Village Drainage Improvements, that's complete. And I lost my track here. I'm sorry, the very last one on this page, the Marina Village Levee Improvements is the one that you were referring to as far as, yeah. It's not dilapidated, it's sunk.
Yeah.
It's a levee. It's the start of what we call the north-south levee. I mean, it wings to the east a little bit. So, we have a levee all the way from the Marina Village Pond, you know, we have a pump station there and the highway patrol station that runs from there. This ties into that from, it runs east-west. But then, from the, just on the east side of San Clemente, it runs all the way up to Luxford, north-south. I mean, it's basically parallel with the old railroad tracks. That's, that is the levee that's protecting the town right now. It's also sinking. We've surveyed that. I have all the data from that townwide drainage study, survey data on that. But it's at least an established levee. And if that levee wasn't there, and people don't quite realize this, but not only on king tides, but, you know, every month, we have a high tide that's higher than the rest of the month. You know, it depends on the moon and all that. A lot of this town would be underwater, probably up to Pixley. Really. We're low. We're just low. It's difficult. It's a very difficult area to protect.
People grew up in this town where they will tell you how kids used to get pocket change by rowing from one side of Madeira Gardens to another to get, take grownups home from the bus stop to their house.
Can't believe it. I mean, we had the railroad. That was a levee. That was the levee that protected this town before anyone even talked about levees. Anyhow, so that is, that's the project. And Dr. Bondi is, you know, he's, we put sandbags.
He's the one who brought it to my attention.
We put sandbags out there to raise it a little bit. But that's just a really Band-Aid type of fix. And the sandbags, you know, they rot in a year or two. So, now you're left with sand, which does absolutely nothing to protect from a high tide. And it's also an environmental issue because it's sand out there in the marsh. Anyhow. Okay, all right. Let's roll on here. Thank you, Judith. The next page, I don't have anything highlighted. When it starts at 15020. But these are pretty typical. There's only a couple of projects in there. Shorebird Marsh Outfall Structure, that's out of our pump station. That's a, that's a pump station that was built in 19, vintage 1985. And now, we're starting to rebuild all of these stations, unfortunately, but they don't last long. And then, the next couple of pages in flood control, I think, three pages are just long-term. We don't even need to get into these. But they're identified in the townwide drainage study. They're low priority compared to the ones we've been talking about.
One question about all these various outflows and outfalls. Are the check valves working or, I know there were some issues with.
There are issues with the one pump station in Mariner Cove with the check valves. And that's, we passed that up. But, yeah, we need to replace a couple of check valves in that pump station. And, you know, we put in the best check valves available. But we have a very corrosive environment here. And it's not really the salt water that corrodes as much as the, the, what do I want to say? I can't think of the word, but it's actually in the clay and the bay mud that causes the corrosion. There's some kind of electrolysis. It's very corrosive. Everything, what we put cathodic protection on, which is sacrificial anodes, so the anode corrodes rather than the thing they're attached to. But even with that, it's difficult to prevent corrosion here. Anyhow, yes, so we, that's a line item there. We've done some work on it, but we do, we'll get them, those check valves. It's not a big deal. I mean, it's, we're not changing anything other than replacing a component. Anything else on flood? Nope. Then the lighting projects. So, this is up, this one, I mean, there's one main project here. And this is replacing our streetlights with LED lights. And it's something, you know, we get repaid eventually through PG&E. But we do have to put the money up front, and Kelly is working on that. So, we held off, and actually, most agencies did this over the past couple of years. And ran into some problems with what kind of light they put in. It's too bright. It's too, it's too white. It's not white enough, all this stuff. So, we've, we've kind of benefited by holding off on this. We haven't lost any of our ability to get refunded by PG&E. But I think what we've heard from all the different agencies and pretty much know what to replace these lights with now. And that'd be all the streetlights in town. And then, we save on electricity with that too, a good bit.
We put up a demo, what, a?
We did.
Year ago, year?
We did. And I'm not real familiar with what the outcome of that was. I'd have to, unfortunately, Kelly's not here. He's the one, again, who's been handling it, doing a really good job.
Any chance we could put one out in Pixley?
Sure, we could.
Or at least just tell us where the demo is, so we can go see it if it's still up.
I don't, yeah, we, we'll get something up here, yeah, right here, so you can see it. You're here at night for a meeting? Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, we'll do that, just to make sure before we go and buy whatever number. I forget how many streetlights we have, but there's a lot of them.
Couple hundred.
Yeah, right. Yes, yes.
Have we looked into grant opportunities?
Well, that basically is a grant. It's a refund of a bit.
But we have to pay it back.
No, we don't pay it back.
Oh, we don't?
No, but we have to pay it upfront. And we get paid, yeah, it's one of those. Well, almost every grant, we have to pay upfront.
It says on bill financing.
Yeah, you know what?
And the loan is paid back by applying the energy savings difference each month.
So, we get paid back. Well, there's that and there's money from PG&E also.
Okay.
I don't want to go further with that because I'll stick my foot in my mouth. I'm not that familiar with how that's repaid. I'll have that answer for you at our next meeting.
Okay, couple of other questions. I know that there was another town that had some issues with the color temperature that you were referring to.
I know Mill Valley did, yes.
Evidently, Novato has somebody on their public work staff that is like an expert on LED streetlights.
Yes, and we're familiar with that, so.
Good.
Again, I, Kelly's on this. I, you know, leave it in good hands when I can.
Okay, and has he considered looking into smart poles, which evidently is the new thing?
No, I haven't heard of the smart poles yet, but maybe he just hasn't told me.
LED streetlights that have some capabilities to transmit information, such as when it burns out or if there's an issue, there's some.
Yeah, it's got a little transmitter or something.
But I think it's Penole that did it. I have some notes at home about another city that looked, that is implementing these. And I will email you with that information, but.
If you could, that'd be great. But I do want to say again, Kelly, I'll tell you, that guy, if something's out there, he'll know about it. He's really good with research.
Right.
If you ever need a research, get him on the side or something. He's really good at that.
Okay.
Just outside of staff time, right? Okay, but we will look into that, and I'll make it, I made a note of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on that? All right, parks?
Parks? So, San Clemente Park, Cove Park. We've had, Kevin's been pushing this for many years. You know, the pathways around there really need to be replaced. Drainage problems, interior paint, that's on the, you know, the big bathroom there.
Okay.
And then, overall maintenance and landscaping. So, that's what that is, and that got pushed out from the last budget. So, we did include that. And then, we've had, we've been pushing out these town park pathway repairs for several years. You know, the one even on Tamalpais, it's got some pretty big root problems there. And that's, moving on with parks.
Can we change the name of San Clemente to Cove?
Yeah, we should. I'm sorry, I tried to do that, and I'll make sure that gets changed everywhere because it is referenced in a couple of different places.
Okay, and as we're doing changes and repairs, are we doing our best to install water-saving devices and energy-efficient devices?
Oh, absolutely.
Great.
Yes.
Okay.
And Kevin's always has been on that. Michael is well aware of it, and he knows the latest and greatest and makes sure we do that.
Okay, thank you.
We're monitored by MMWD too, so, I mean, it's not that that's the only reason we do it, but there are checks and double checks on all of that.
Great. And then, if we're ready to go on to the next page, I have a question.
Up to you guys.
All right. Okay. Dave, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, the only one I highlighted here was the tennis court resurfacing, both Town Park and Granada. You know, I didn't get a chance, I want to go look at Granada. I'll be honest with you. We resurfaced Granada, was back when Jackie Branch was here. It was a good while ago. I guess, yeah, in 2005 or something. It surprises me we need that. I haven't looked at that. I do want, I have a note to look at that. We certainly, you know, the Town Park tennis courts, that's been pushed out for many budget periods. So, one of those, $80,000 would be for Town Park, and the 60, according to Mario, is for Granada. But again, I want to look at Granada. I'm surprised we need that.
The shade structure at Town Park Playground, isn't that going in this summer?
That's going in, and that's in, so that should be spent before June 30th.
So, it's in the current, because we are not mentioning.
Yeah, that first column is 1617.
Okay. I have a question about the, or really more of a comment about the green room stairs.
You would. Yes, go ahead. I hope I can answer it. Well, no, I'm not even saying that, not you in particular, the council, because I may not be able to answer that. That's all.
Okay. If it needs to be replaced, I understand.
Personally.
My only comment would be, if we are going to be looking at the community center and the various rooms and how the rooms relate to each other.
Yes.
I think we should take that, take future use into concern when we design these stairs and determine if, you know, just make sure the design is appropriate for what we want. Maybe at the same time, if we're going to be pouring a bunch of concrete, you know, maybe we could do a little ramp over here if we need it for additional access to another location or classroom or what have you. I just, I would hope that you guys look at it in totality.
And we will. And that's why, that, expanding on my you would comment, that's because we haven't designed this. It came up, they wanted to do it months ago, and I kind of had to put a hold on that, I mean, almost a year ago, actually. And, you know, we have to think of accessibility and building code railings and rise and run on steps and all of that thing, in addition to what we may be doing in the, in the community center. So, yes, we, that was, that's kind of, yeah, that may get moved out. It may, that amount may get increased, it may get decreased. I don't know. And then, the next page, I didn't have anything highlighted. There's really not a whole lot on that. The Dog Park feasibility study, that's been completed. That's the $12,300. And where we go with that, I don't know. So, that's pushed out.
Is that on the website?
The study?
Yeah.
I don't know. I can't answer that. I'll find out.
Put it on the website, because I know people are interested in that.
Yes.
Great.
And the study was to try and identify locations. I mean, that was the gist of it. So, I don't think we ever came up with any very valuable locations for that.
I don't remember even seeing that study. Did we?
We'll talk to Mario about that.
It didn't come up here. It kind of died at the Parks Commission level.
Okay.
Yeah.
They were talking about putting it across from the post office.
All right. Well, if there's no valuable information, maybe it's not worth putting it on the website, but.
Well, let's see. No, there should be valuable. I mean, there's $12,000 worth of valuable information. Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Who owns the land? There's sort of a gravel lot across from the Accura Station, and there's a pump station there. Who owns?
I'm sorry, where exactly?
You're driving on.
The Accura Station?
Across from the Accura, going out towards the, towards the bay. You're on Paradise, and there's, looks like sort of a.
That's our pump station.
Right. Who owns that land?
The Strip, San Clemente Drive, just east of San Clemente, the town does. We bought that from Golden Gate Bridge District. And they have a right to buy it back anytime for a dollar.
Can we put a fence around it, call it a dog park and be done with this?
Pardon?
We're actually going to bring this dog park issue back to the council. It's going to come, we're meeting with the Park and Rec Commission, and it'll come back to you. So, we will vet this, I promise you.
Okay.
So, save it for another day. Do you, it is getting late. Do you have any questions so far? I mean, this is coming back to you on the 20th. It allows you some time to look at it and take it in. There are good descriptions. Most of these projects are carryovers, except for the flood control. We did take an aggressive stance and add to them, or we can continue.
Well, I have several questions or comments. Should we just go through and each of us pipe up with our questions or comments? Or do you want to hear Dave's explanation? We're coming up in just a minute on streets and transportation. That could, I mean, Dave could probably talk for an hour on those.
What do you like?
I'd like to at least be able to ask my questions.
Sure.
Let's do that, and then, if at the end, you guys want to go over some of the other street stuff. And if anybody has any other questions.
Isn't this all coming up on the 20th?
It's coming back to you on the 20th.
But we have the whole rest of the budget to get through too, which is why we had this tonight.
Okay.
Well, your questions are good.
Okay, and we don't have page numbers, but this is the, the page just before Streets and Transportation begins. It's the Eastman Parking Lot Reconfiguration Feasibility Study. Staff request a $40,000. Feasibility Study. Staff request of forty thousand dollars to hire consultants to explore the possibilities of expanding the parking lot. Do we really need a forty thousand dollar consultant? And that's a yes or no, Dave?
Yeah, the answer's no. I mean, you know, that issue has come up in the past, there's people parking there, it's a safety issue, but, yeah, that was in last year's budget.
I'm okay leaving it in as sort of a contingency, but I would like to minimize the amount of consultants we bring in for things that we might be able to do.
You know what, I'll draft a plan for you. Be a lot less than forty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good, we could save forty thousand. All right, two pages later, middle of the page, Project Zero Four dash zero one one Endeavor Cove Slide Repair Evaluation.
Yes.
Is that on town property?
That is town property, that's another one the town bought.
Got it.
Well, I think we acquired that, part of that subdivision, unfortunately.
Okay. The next page, last item, this is for future, the High Canal Bridge Pathway, the project status says canceled. I remember this had kind of.
In Other, let me get to that.
Okay, one four dash zero zero three.
Yeah, Other.
It's a gravel.
Strange category.
Right, yeah, dirt path. So the project status says canceled. I remember that, I thought this was on hold, I don't recall that it was completely.
Why am I missing it? It's not in Other.
No, it was just the next page after the Endeavor Cove.
I'm sorry, I got a, let me look at, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right.
Here you go. We're a team. Okay, yes.
Okay. At some point, it would be good to get an update on that, because I don't recall that that was actually canceled, I knew it was kind of on hold.
I'm not sure why that's in there, to be honest with you.
Is it just strictly on hold?
Yes, I mean, that's, well, we've tried several times to pave this, and several times the project's been shut down. I mean, it's come to the council before.
I know.
Yeah, and, you know, the homeowners there on Birch really do not want this paved. So maybe canceled's the wrong word there, but.
I think we.
Bob may know a bit about that too, I mean, the last, this came up recently, I'm not thinking, you know, years ago, but not relatively recent at the B-PAC.
I remember, was it on this council dying, or was it when I was on the planning commission? This came up, and it was standing room only, people upset about everything.
It was contentious, yeah.
Was it here?
But I worry that it's a safety issue.
Could have been the planning.
A kid fell in the canal, I heard. It's a safety issue, so.
Even if it had been paved, the kid would have been run off of the road at the end of the canal.
Right, but my point is, I believe it's a safety issue, I think the town needs to kind of consider what possibly can be done to enhance the safety here. That's all I want to say.
So there is a right-of-way issue there.
Right.
It's an easement issue.
An easement, yeah.
It's an easement issue, it's an access easement, it's not a public-use easement, and it's being used by the public.
But I'm concerned about the safety issues there, is there anything we can do to make it a little bit safer, even if we don't pave?
Yeah, I can look at that.
Okay.
Anyhow, that's what we spent, there's no, you know, there's no money requested for that.
Okay. Two pages later, Paradise Drive Sidewalk Replacement, second, third one from the bottom. I thought we had gotten some funding for this one, this is San Clemente, it's a Paradise and San Clemente to see what.
I don't have, see, that's secured partial funding.
Between now and the budget, could we look in?
We will.
I think Nisha knows.
She does.
This was at the TAM.
She did, I didn't, you know, with the funding on this, I didn't want to get anyone too confused. We will have the funding specified.
Right, the TAM board approved some fund, like a good chunk of funding. It might not have gone to MTC, last time I talked to Nisha, by the time it comes back to council on the twentieth, maybe MTC would have approved it.
Right, and then still, that's in a concept stage, we still don't quite know, yeah, we talked about closing a lane on Paradise Drive, that kind of thing. There's a, you know, kind of a right-of-way issue there, you know, getting enough width to get everybody what they want. Anyhow, yeah, we'll look at that, but.
Okay.
We do have some funding secured, I can't tell you exactly what it is.
Okay, good. Two pages later. The project number one five dash zero two eight, capital project development and review. This isn't big money, but it's preparation of studies, concepts, and reviews to support capital project development, and it's funded through the sales tax override, but it sounds like it's just a whole lot of study-related stuff.
It is, it's nothing specific.
So is this just a placeholder for future projects?
Yes, that's what.
Got it, okay.
So it may be seventy-five thousand, it may be seventy-five hundred.
Okay, I just, I didn't want sales tax override used for nebulous type planning exercises, and that was it for my questions. Thank you for allowing me to ask those. Anybody else have any specific questions?
Let me.
Jim?
I'm looking at, install sixteen bicycle racks around town, might be good, but how can we, is there any way we can protect the bicycles once they're attached to the racks?
That's a tough one. Yeah, that's a tough one.
Everybody by Schwens?
Yeah. We have the bike rack, so it's not, I mean, maybe there's some bulletproof, theft-proof bike rack out there, but these are racks we already have, we need to install. Yeah, I don't think there is either. Councilmember Abasi is shaking his head, I shake my head too.
Nope. I should put a camera on it, and that doesn't do you any good.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Jim? Okay, Carla?
Yeah, the very, very last one, the town entry sign. The sign had been designed, it had been conceptually approved by the planning commission, it was something that Town Center was going to build, that we wanted to get it built for the centennial.
Yes.
And we had had an agreement that the town was just going to pay for the letters and the logo, and the rest was going to be paid for by Town Center, and then at the very last minute, they changed their mind.
Yes.
And what was the price that they wanted the town to pay for it?
I believe it was, it was about sixty thousand in additional utility costs, plus a ground lease of approximately twenty-five hundred dollars a month, and there were other additions to it as well.
Right, and, and the town had to maintain, to use our maintenance workers to maintain the landscaping. So I'm curious, what, what is this concept for?
Carla, it's the same concept, that number was just moved.
Oh.
So it doesn't reflect the latest Town Center information.
Oh, okay, so it's, we still don't have a sign.
Thirty thousand dollars in the last budget, I just moved it out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have no more information on that, so I'm sorry, but.
Well, it was.
Yeah, that's where that number came, it's what we had, I just moved it out.
Yeah, well, and I did think it was totally absurd to pay that kind of money for Town Center, when they had agreed to pay for it.
Carla, there is some talk about maybe trying to find another location, like maybe on the Caltrans property, or something like that, so I think this is a placeholder to see if we can find another spot.
Great.
For a really nice town sign that does not require us to incur all of those extra expenses.
Yeah, okay, no, that's, that's good.
We want the sign, and we're not ready to give up yet, but we're not going to go with the Town Center concept.
It's a placeholder, that's.
Right, okay, very good. No, and I think we, that we should have a sign, and it was very unfortunate that it worked out that way, with Town Center. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Could I just say, I mean, again, this is an overview, and if you have any questions between now and, and the twentieth, just feel free to call me, you don't know how to get ahold of me.
We'll have, I do have one thing that I wanted to mention, this isn't really a capital expense, but since we were talking about parks and stuff. I was out walking my dog and picking up trash along the pathway near Redwood and Wornham.
Yes.
There are so many cigarette butts in that beautiful little planting and seeding area at the foot of Wornham. I think people are stopping there to sit down and have a cigarette. Would it be possible to have a place to dispose of cigarette butts?
I think it's highly probable.
Thank you. Would any member of the public like to speak to this? Karen.
Anything you want to borrow Wornham's?
I am too.
My name is Karen Gerbosi. I'm a member of the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, in fact, I'm the chair, and I'm here as that, and as somebody who apparently has nothing friggin' else to do. Without being too snarky, when I was the president of my homeowners association, I would be like, focus, people. So anyway, we're talking about the budget, we're not talking about butts. So anyway, with regard to the budget, I missed, this is administrative stuff, put page numbers on this thing. So we've got a two-hundred-and-fourteen-page attachment into the agenda, and you can't reference anything that's like, oh, the page after the page that said whatever in the hell. So that's one thing. The second thing is that I can't figure out why the numbers on the project numbers are random, arbitrary, and capricious as far as their sequence. Within a specific project, so it's not, so I understand that there's all these different projects, but at each project, it should begin over again, and the first number should be the lowest number. This thing should be able to sort by numbers, this is an Excel spreadsheet or something like that. So, so I'm just saying, page numbers and put the items within the thing in sequence, even the NAs aren't all grouped together. So I don't know why that's that cuckoo. The other thing is that, you mocking me?
I just, I rarely hear the word cuckoo.
I'm not going to spell it. The other area that comes up with the Sales Tax Oversight people, there's a member on the committee who has a thing about the emergency preparedness committee, and I didn't understand, the disaster preparedness coordination, I didn't understand why on the budget that there was money in seventeen eighteen for disaster preparedness, but nothing after that. Are we expecting that we're only going to have a disaster in seventeen eighteen, and after that, we're just going to get flooded out.
We'll be copacetic, don't worry.
That concludes the entertainment portion, thank you.
Thank you.
Remember, I just wanted to reiterate, the CIP is a one-year, we're not, we're not forecasting out, and so.
Right.
No, but I'm, the thing on me.
It's understandable.
I understand.
Because there was all kinds of stuff in, just saying.
Thank you. By the way.
Focus.
Does the project number have to do with the year the project was originated and then sequential?
It does.
Okay.
What has, and then the last three numbers are categories, because you had a hundred as a town project, two hundred to three hundred is a Santa Fe project, so we have a whole list of that, I could send that, actually, I'll include that, we'll group this together. This thing got revised so many times, it was, I, I thank you for bringing, I mean, I've thought about.
Microphone.
Microphone.
I said, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Nope, any other questions or comments? This is advisory only, and we'll see you back here in a couple of weeks.
Great.
All right? By all means, come back in two weeks and entertain us again, Karen.
That's part of the meeting.
Oh, good. All right, agenda. Let's see, Agenda Item seven point two, consideration and possible action to either one, adopt Resolution Twenty Eight slash twenty seventeen, calling the election and requesting the County of Rin to consolidate the election, or number two, introduce an ordinance to move the election date to June fifth, twenty eighteen. Town Clerk Rebecca Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Given the lateness of the evening now, I will briefly try to summarize some of the highlights of the staff report, namely that on the May sixteenth Town Council meeting, we introduced our concerns related to the anticipated cost of the twenty seventeen election, and then council requested that staff explore options. So we are bringing this item back tonight to discuss the two available options, one being taking the opportunity to discuss the option of introducing an ordinance that would extend council member terms for the three seats expiring in twenty seventeen to June of twenty eighteen. In the staff report, it mentions that there's no change recommended to the twenty nineteen expiration, expiring seats at this time because of pending legislation at the state level that could bring changes that we can't begin to process. And then two, after discussing this option, if it's decided that this isn't an avenue that the council wishes to pursue, the council can take the opportunity to adopt Resolution Twenty Eight, twenty seventeen, and call the November election and proceed as normal for our odd-year November elections. How this would look different is if, if that route is taken, we would proceed as normal, and the period for pulling papers and declaring candidacy would begin on July seventeenth and carry on through August eleventh, I believe. And then we would have the election in November of twenty seventeen. If you elect to introduce the ordinance to change the elections to June of twenty eighteen and cancel the November twenty seventeen elections, we would bring that back at the June twentieth meeting for a second reading and potential adoption. And during the intervening two-week period, we would have the opportunity to gather public comment to find out if, what the interest and opposition level would be to this. And, let's see if I'm forgetting anything. We can also bring back the option of deciding not to adopt the ordinance and, and then have the availability of calling the election with the Resolution Twenty Eight, twenty seventeen. And finally, if you elect to move the elections to June of twenty eighteen, that open period for declaring candidacy would be mid-February to mid-March. And I can answer any questions that I might have forgotten, or our Assistant Town Attorney or Town Manager can jump in also.
I have a question. Rebecca, if it's in here.
Rebecca, if it's in here, I missed it, but did you, did you figure out how many other school districts and other agencies will have moved their elections to June so that we will realize the cost savings, as if we were all still on the same track?
How many moved their elections to June?
Well, I mean, the, the, the proposal here was to take the election currently set in November of this year and push it until June of next year, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I thought the primary reason to do that was because we, because it's going to be more expensive, because all these other, like the school districts and others have abandoned the existing date.
They did. They moved to November of 2018.
So moving it to June doesn't save us the money, then?
It's a gubernatorial primary.
Correct.
So we do save the money?
We would save more money than we would otherwise. June elections would be Belvidere, Ross, Mill Valley, and then the various county and, and state-level offices and primaries.
Would there be county or state-level primaries for, in November, then? None?
None. But there could be, there could be ballot measures.
Because right now, there's Fairfax, Larkspur, Novato, San Anselmo, and Corder Madera. That's five.
Correct.
And then, I don't know what else there is, if we move it to June. All I'm trying to say is, do we going to realize the savings?
We, we will realize savings. Maybe not, it, it's something they really can't predict. I, I've tried to get an answer. The best they can do is, is giving us, well, for the November election, the best they could do was give us that range of 7 to 750 per registered voter. And that depends, you have until August to submit ballot measures, so they don't even know if anything's in the works at this point, where someone might submit ballot measures that might be included on the November ballot. And that would help defray the costs of the remaining participants, but they just, they just don't know if those are even in the works.
Okay.
Of course, a June election would not be as inexpensive as a November election, but it would be less expensive than the November election that we would be participating in November of 2017.
Okay.
But not November of 2018. That would be a, a less expensive election.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, I do. Judith, you sent a memo.
Council was provided a confidential attorney-client memo prior to this, this item. That's, unless council waives that privilege, it's not up for discussion at the current time.
Oh, okay, then Rebecca, sorry, I have a question for you then.
Okay.
Did, were you able to get a ballpark estimate of what the savings would be, moving it to June instead of this coming November?
I did not. I can see if I can get a better projection. I think they thought it could be in the four, four to six dollar per registered voter range, but it's, it's all speculative. But I will ask and see if I can get something in writing and send it to you this week. And I'll have it available for the, of the June 20 agenda as well.
You might whisper something.
Again, it's a moving ballpark, I want to be careful. It's a moving number, and I want to be careful, but again, originally, this started off with, hey, we could potentially, it could cost us potentially up to $33,000 to $35,000 if we stay on this November track for the reasons outlined by our Town Clerk. The estimates are kind of all over the place, but when you look at who's currently in the election, at being a state election, we, conservatively, we still believe there's $20,000 to be saved by moving it to June. It's in the $20,000 range, give or take. So it's a little bit less because the election is in June, but there's still, still a significant number to consider, I think, for staff to recommend, the council to consider. So we think it's in the $20,000 range.
And the Elections Department is hesitant to give a concrete or even ballpark estimate because of all the moving targets involved with putting on an election and whether or not there's initiatives or ballot measures and what other participants there may be on the, the ballot.
Okay.
And that may be the best, the best response that I get, or I might be able to get something more concrete before, maybe by the end of this week or, or in time for the packet for June 20 for certain.
Okay, thanks, Rebecca.
Any other questions?
I have one other. So what else will be on the ballot in June of 2018?
State office primaries.
State for what? What, what state office?
I believe governor.
Governor? Okay.
And, I'd have to look, but.
But we anticipate that the June would have a high voter turnout.
High is relative, higher than our current one, but my research from the previous staff reports showed that our June turnouts were, or, and that the, the city clerks that already have elections in June said that you could expect low to mid-60%.
As opposed to 30%?
As opposed to high 80s to low 90% for a November election, or our mid-to-high 30s for a November of odd-year election.
All right.
So, higher, but not as high as we could get.
So the highest is November of even years.
Correct, with about 88%.
Right. Second highest is June of even years.
About 65%.
And then below that.
Is what we currently have.
Is November of odd-years, which is what we currently have. So we will definitely be improving things by going to June. So, okay.
And you said average 30%?
Oh, our voter turnout, I don't know if I have it in here, from, it was about 35%, 36% in November of 2015.
So we get double the turnout in June than we do in November?
Correct. Slightly less than double, but close.
And we save a bunch of money. All right. Would any member of the public like to speak to this? Bring it back for discussion. Who wants to start?
I.
You inhaled.
I know, I'm taking a big breath and trying to decide whether, I remain against extending our current terms. We were elected for a certain time period, and I think we should stick with that.
Okay. I feel a little awkward supporting three positions, staying on an extra six months. However, when I first ran and all the times thereafter, I've really put as a priority being prudent. And if it's going to save the town some money, looking at some of the funds that we are already losing by the closing of our, the dealership, I think that for six months and saving the town money, I think it's a prudent way to go. Although I feel funny saying that, but for the sake of saving the town money, I think it would be, that it wouldn't be inappropriate. And it was on the agenda, and the only person here that has no comment on it.
We got one letter in support of extending.
Extending, yeah. Nothing but cakes.
Yeah, so I think that if we had a turnout of people saying, you know, November 2017, then I think that that would, you know, that we should bow to the, the will of the people, but it didn't seem to stir up any, any turnout.
Sloane?
I spoke to a bunch of council members from other places about the concept. My own takeaway was, you know, we ought not to take ourselves too seriously, if you will. We probably care more about the philosophy of the thing than our constituents do, just being real about it. So, on the other hand, I agree with Jim that we did get elected and, for a very specific thing, for a specific term. I'm waffling, frankly, Diane. I like the, when, when it was 50 grand, it seemed like for sure, right? By the way, it's not like we're not going to switch to an even, it's whether we do it now or at the next election. And so it's, to me, it's purely a money issue. Is 20 grand, saving the town 20 grand, although even that's a little sketchy, I appreciate, by the way, you gave a concrete answer, Todd, but it's a sketchy, I mean, who the hell knows, right? Could be more or less. We could be, if we pushed it six months and then, in fact, it cost us the identical amount, that would feel really futile. So 20 grand is sort of me very much on the edge about whether, is that enough money to change, you know, the sense of public trust? And then when I get deep about it, I think, but then, is it really? Anyway, I'm, I'm all over the place on this. Jim, I kind of agree with you philosophically, but we are, I perceive myself and all of us as pragmatic rather than ideological. And pragmatically, 20 grand counts for something. I don't know.
Well, I'm not certain, but don't we have to notify the county one way or another?
Yeah, I think we do.
After tonight, so it's either, we don't make a decision tonight, or we.
But no, I agree, yeah, we should do something tonight.
Because of the tight time constraints, it would need to be on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for the June 20 meeting for their approval, and they would probably have language to the effect of pending approval this evening by the Corder Madera Town Council, because their meetings are in the daytime and ours would be later that evening. And with that language, if you opted not to adopt the ordinance and decided to call the election again, that would be your last available opportunity to call the November election.
No, I agree with you, Jim. Whatever we do, we, we have enough information to make a decision tonight. So anyway, there's my waffle answer so far. I'm very much, I'm ready to be persuaded. Jim, I agree with you. It feels a little ideological to me, but I kind of agree. Carla, I agree with you, but.
So I feel even weirder than you do, because I've been appointed, obviously. And Sloane, I think you made a great point, because I talked to a bunch of council members at the MCCMC thing, too, and the "don't take yourself so seriously" part came through really strongly.
Yeah.
To me. I spoke to a lot, I, I've been asking people for the past two weeks around town, and everyone basically said, if you can save some money and you're extending things six months, I don't see what the big deal is. Jim, I completely agree with you as well, right? I mean, this was the term, this is what we're elected for. But the deciding factor for me, and if I had to go one way or the other, which obviously none of us want to do, but we're going to have to, is the difference in turnout. Because it is going to be a primary election, it's going to be a big election, it is going to be governor, right, which is going to be a big decision, so there's going to be a big turnout, and if the difference is a 30% turnout, and a 65% turnout, I think that's really important. We need really good turnout and the spirit of this law, the spirit of this law, the change in this law is for better turnout and to get better participation in elections. And by moving it to June, I think we are adhering to the spirit of that law. So as much as it pains me to say it, and as difficult it is for me to say it, I would say move it to June.
Thank you. I want to remind everybody that this was on our agenda at our last meeting. And Rebecca had kindly posted something on Nextdoor that very clearly explained the situation and the new information and the fact that we would be considering possibly extending our current terms. And I never got an email, we didn't have people show up at the last meeting.
No, I agree, I didn't get a single person to reach out to me, not one.
I did the same before this meeting as well.
Oh, thank you, I must have missed that.
Oh, except for the letter from Nothing But Cakes.
Right. So this is the second meeting, we don't have people complaining, I didn't receive any emails opposing this. We received one email in support of the extension by six months. It's a local business owner, but I think she's also a resident, if I'm not mistaken. So this is two meetings now that we have put the information out there and the public has not told us, don't do it. So I think that fact, combined with the fact that we'd be saving a bunch of money, and combined with what Bob just said about increased turnout, in my mind, kind of is a, more strongly pushes me towards going for the June election, rather than, you know, going with the argument that, well, we were only elected for, you know, a four-year term, and it's maybe not exactly cool to, you know, give ourselves an extra six months. So, you know, I'm trying to balance it, but in my mind, the forces for going to June kind of outweigh those against it.
Okay.
So that's where I stand.
And also, clearly, it does not apply to the next cycle. This is just the current cycle, because you guys want a chance to think about, is the law changing and how are the elections going to flesh out and all this other stuff? Okay.
Well, we'll have to come back with cleanup regardless, so it makes sense to hold off on the changing the 2019 elections now. And I just tried to do some quick looking, and it looks like it's all state offices plus Senate and Assembly, and there's, there's some heavy-issue things on, on the 2018 statewide primary. So it stands to reason that you would get a good turnout.
Okay.
So if there's no more discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, and I think I know how it's going to come out, but I'd like to move Resolution Number 28/2017.
Which one is that?
To call the election.
To call the current?
Yep. Keep it as it is.
Are you making a statement?
No.
He's making a motion.
I'm making a motion.
And we will all just sit here and wait to see if there's a second.
The reason you'd make that motion is to make a statement, right?
No.
Okay.
Well, I do not hear a second, Jim.
Okay.
Is there any other, the motion fails for lack of a second. Are there any other council members who would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we do the other one, whatever the numer, number is. Can you elaborate?
So Sloane, are you saying you would like to introduce an ordinance amending Section 2.38 of the Town of Corder Madera Municipal Code to move the November 2017 election to June 2018, resulting in an extension of the current council terms up to six months?
Yes. So introduced or moved or something? Okay.
So we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
You sure you don't want to let Jim second it to show his spirit of accommodation and cooperation with his brothers and sisters on a council and not the sort who would.
It is 13 minutes to midnight, let's have a vote.
Councilmember Andrews.
No.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor First.
Yes. All righty. Agenda Item 7.3, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve Resolution 24/2017, Establishing Procedures and Requirements for Processing and Consideration of Development Agreements. Would we want to continue this maybe to the?
It was pulled.
Oh, it's pulled, sorry. It was still on this one.
Hey, is I have to put it on?
I forgot, yeah, I know, I forgot to cross it out. I forgot to cross it out. Sorry. Agenda item 7.4, review of draft June 20 town council agenda. The only thing I would suggest is maybe could we put climate mayors on consent? Sounds like it's a hot-button issue and at least one member of the public was very interested. And I do have one other question on a consent calendar item, number four. You know what? I'll ask you about that offline. Just curious about five years. Anybody have anything else? Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to minutes of the May 16 town council meeting. Any changes or, if not, I would entertain a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condon.
Yes.
Mayor first.
Yes. Thank you all. And I would like to extend a special thank you to our town attorney, Judith Propp, who has been filling in as kind of our full-time attorney for both planning issues as well as town council for the past many months while we were kind of in transition. But we will have our new town attorney to handle council meetings, Teresa Stricker, at our next meeting. But we still get you for planning commission and other planning-related issues. Isn't that right, Judith?
Correct.
Okay.
It's been my pleasure.
And it's been our pleasure as well. Wishing you all the best. And we'll see you next time a contentious planning issue comes up. So, thank you.
Todd?
All right.